To the November 14th meeting of the Hingham School Committee. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. We have a nice crowd in the audience. It's been a while since we've had a lot of in-person visitors. For our meeting tonight, we also have Carrie Nie, one of our members, is participating remotely. Carrie, hello, can you hear us all okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, great, thank you. All right, but before we start the meeting, I just want to make this announcement that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws that temporarily amend certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair, that's me, at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is here recording tonight. Is anyone else recording? Nobody online? Okay, great. All right, we'll call to order, but just before we jump into the meeting, I did want to take a minute on behalf of the committee to thank this community for their support of the new building to replace Foster School. The nearly unanimous vote at special town meeting and that overwhelming support at the ballot box was incredibly meaningful to all of us on the committee and to the families and the staff, particularly at Foster School, who have waited very patiently for this moment. We recognize that building a new school is a really big ask, particularly in tough economic times, which we are certainly facing right now. And in a lot of communities, the building of a new school, even in the best of times, can be a moment that tears the fabric of a community apart. It can pit neighbor against neighbor, it can become an us versus them, but that is not what happened here in Hingham. In Hingham, we came together to show our support for our schools, to show how much we value our educators and our staff and our leadership, and to really show what matters in Hingham, right? In Hingham, we care about kids, we care about education, and we care about each other. So while we're celebrating a new school building, I think we should also take a moment to be very proud of what we've built together as a community. So thank you to everyone, appreciate it. All right, with that, I will take a motion for approval of minutes.
I, so on the agenda, it says September 24th, so I'm gonna just say it's the 17th. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 17th, 2022.
And I will second. Awesome. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? I think we have to do a roll call because Carrie is remote, so we'll do a roll call vote. Carrie, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Ally.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Ness.
Aye.
I am aye as well.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 24th, 2022.
I will second.
Actually, sorry, sorry, October 24th, 2022.
Thank you.
I will second, October 24th.
Any discussion on those meeting minutes? No? All right, all those in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Aye.
Ally.
Aye.
Matt.
I'll abstain because I joined late.
Okay, no problem.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right, great. All right, item three on our agenda is our usual question and comment period. Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement, we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition to that, we have 15 minutes set aside at the beginning of each meeting for items that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, address your comments to the Chair. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, they must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general law, the responsibilities of the school committee are: one, to select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. Public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the committee, and the school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of these comments made during the public comment period. And just as a reminder, in addition to this public comment period, we also, our practice is to provide time for questions and comments during new business items on the agenda. So, anyone in the audience with questions or comments? No? Jen, anyone on?
I'm actually not on the Zoom, could be on.
Sherri, can you see it? Anyone?
Nope.
Nope, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. All right, well then, moving on. We will move to item four, which is, I'll turn it over to Dr. Adams for superintendent to report.
So we have a long agenda, so I'll be brief in the superintendent's report, and we just have a couple of things to share. We shared a couple of documents last week when we met with the advisory committee and for a discussion around budget planning for next year, next fiscal year. The first item is 4.1, which was a pause. The MSBA has paused their program for accelerated building repairs. It is a program we had hoped to access to help support current needs for roofs at three of our schools, so we're hopeful that that will change in the near future, so there's some information in the packet for you on that. Again, for 4.2, last school committee meeting, we shared a prediction, an estimate from the state on estimated increases in out-of-district tuitions of 14%. MASBO, School Business Association, Business Officials Association, and the Association of School Superintendents did a frequently asked questions of where, because where does that 14% and how does the state calculate? And so you'll see there in the document some more information of where that 14% is generated. Again, both of those are potential budget drivers as we go into next fiscal year. We also shared the professional development course catalog for your information for this year, and I'll have Katie just give you a little bit of information about that.
Great, well, first of all, I wanted to thank our curriculum team, many of whom are here this evening, our directors and coordinators, all really pulled together to collaborate to offer some really rich professional development offerings this year. So one of the things just to note about our catalog this year that's a bit different of how we proceeded in past years is we did align each one of our offerings with a strategic indicator to show our commitment to that work and to really leverage the time that we have for professional development. We also took into consideration some of the input that we had received from our teachers to focus more of our professional development on work with grade-level teams and with content-specific teams to really work on some of the strategic things that you need to implement tomorrow. So we were also honoring that in our development of this catalog. And so, few highlights from the catalog. This year, we are organizing a four-part PD series focused on our tiered systems of support and universally designed elementary math instruction. We're focusing on our elementary reading program pilot, PD related to our new middle school science curriculum. We also acknowledge the mental health and social emotional needs of our students, and so for that work, we've partnered with several organizations, including the Math Partnership for Youth, Safe Schools, the NAN Project, all of whom will be having some offerings in our schools. And we've also continued our relationships with some of our previous professional development partners, which include Primary Source, a terrific organization with really rich professional development, Responsive Classroom, Leslie Center for Mathematics, Suffolk Center for Resortive Justice, just to name a few. And I'm particularly grateful to some of our educators who have volunteered to run some book studies, some professional learning communities, and so we're, again, in addition to taking advantage of outside organizations, we're also leveraging some of the talent that's in our midst. And in addition to developing our classroom educators, we're also committed to developing our district leaders and so have offerings for our leadership as well. We've partnered with three different DUCY academies, including the Inclusive Practices Academy, the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy, and the S3 Student Supports Academy, again, to develop that capacity and leadership within. So, all in all, we're looking forward to a great year of learning and to continue to deepen our practice, so.
Thank you. That is, I really appreciate the additional work that went in sort of aligning these with the strategic plan, I think that was really very thoughtful work that was done, and appreciate that, and also pulling in professional development on the mental health piece of it as well, really wonderful, thank you.
I skipped over, and I shouldn't have, I included in the packet for the school committee a press release that we shared about the visit from the author of the one book, one school, book at the middle school of Count Me In. The author did three assemblies for our students at the middle school to sort of showcase and bring together the whole school community around the themes of the book, and we're grateful for Hingham Ed Foundation, who funded the author's visit last week or a couple weeks ago, so.
That's it? That's great? Okay. Communications?
I did, I did include under there the report that we also shared last week when we met with the advisory committee. It is a report from the state auditor, it's a long document, but helpful in thinking about budget, and the state auditor kind of outlines in the report requirements that are from the state and how they have been funded or not funded by the state. One example that they highlight is school transportation, that in the funding from the state to support municipalities' costs for transportation hasn't really measured up, so that the cost gets transferred over to the municipality, and municipalities are sort of constrained by the 2.5% that's allowed over tax limits and the constraints of municipalities to levy taxes, given some of the requirements from the state. So I think it's an important document that sort of, again, sort of helps us think about FY24 and the budget process coming up.
Thank you. Yeah, I read through that, MASCA sent out some information about that as well, and it is very fascinating to realize that we're not missing, everyone's struggling with the lack of funding, but I think it was an excellent report, and I'm hoping with some of the new tax initiatives that will pass, also pass at the ballot box, that maybe we'll finally see some of these things, we'll get funded, so. Anything else? For you? All right.
She was one of the featured speakers at the conference last week, so people at the conference heard her give a lot of this info in person.
Oh, that's great. All right, 5.2, Student Communications. Hello, Nathan, how are you today?
I quickly ask a question before I start. Can I get the copy of the packet for today online?
Yes.
Share that with me?
Yes, yep.
And then also, so student communications. First thing I want to highlight is that some of the work that the student advisory committee is gonna be working on going forward, so just like to give context before I ever do this, student advisory committee is a student committee that's elected from each grade more representative, and our duty is to advise the school committee on district policies from the student perspective, and as Chair, I also serve as the student rep to the school committee. So the current project that we're gonna be working on is looking at reinstating the community service requirement at the high school, and we're working on that in, with the high school school council, and Jasper Lee and Mr. Swanson with their work there. And so, we're gonna try and, I'm gonna introduce this to the committee tomorrow, we were unable to meet with Jasper, we had some scheduling errors there, but we're gonna look at other schools and how they institute those requirements, look at past Hingham practice, and we're also gonna try and identify some organizations in which students could work, whether that's like this, service on town committees, other places in the community, and I think the key in that would just be making it easy for students to find opportunities, because it's like one thing to institute a community service requirement, it's one thing to make it a good system where students can find good opportunities in their community. Other agenda item for SAC is that I really wanna look at creating a set of bylaws for that organization, because so far, we haven't done this, and I've avoided kind of going through this process, because I think kind of locking us into a system could, would be a little bit stifling early on, because we might have to do stuff that's a little bit outside of it to keep it alive early on, where that's like election procedure, et cetera. But I think that instituting that now would be good to just kind of make sure the system keeps going after I leave, and it's the first one originally on there. And then we'll also look back on a report, back on progress with other schools. And another thing we might look at at that meeting tomorrow is looking at like other additional ways individual members can get involved in different town committees or organizations to kind of increase the role. I was gonna want to mention this, but it's actually here, but the, that they're guys are gonna be working on some efforts to do like an art certificate too, which I thought was a really cool thing in high school, so I was gonna mention that in my report. And then just general, sports academics, high school news, I want to congratulate the girls soccer team for winning 6-0 in the playoffs, which is very impressive. Their games are always packed, which is frustrating to me, because I have rehearsal at the same time, so. But, yeah, they've been doing really good for this team, all the other, I don't have any other like sports or academic news from the school, but those are what they're working on, student advisory committee.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate all of that work that you and everyone is doing. Anyone on the committee have any communications?
I have something, Michelle.
Okay, yep, go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna update everyone later in the meeting on the status of negotiations, but I received maybe like four or five emails regarding our negotiations with the paraprofessionals over the past few weeks, and I know some committee members were copying, some weren't, so, since we did receive the emails, and based on the communications, it seems like there's a lot of misinformation floating around out there, so I just wanted to update everyone on the status now, and just let you know how I responded, to make sure that, you know, that people have accurate information out there. So, as you all know, this is the year we negotiate successor contract, freer contracts with all six of our bargaining units. And just for the new school committee members, our, the current contracts run through August 31st of 2023, so in past cycles, the committee and the union begins the process in January of the school year when the contract is due to end, so that would be January of 2023. And we usually start with unit A, which is the teachers. However, this year, the paraprofessionals requested to begin negotiations a little earlier, and our subcommittee is happy to start working with them on the new contracts. So in that process, Dr. Adams and I met with the principals to go over the current contracts, and the subcommittee met on November 1st to organize on our end, and then sent the paraprofessionals the proposed date so we can get going on this. We didn't receive a response for a while, so followed up, and then in the meantime, we got, like I said, maybe four or five emails from community members, and just from the context, people seemed to either think that we were not negotiating with them, or we had rejected terms or something, so I just, excuse me. We proposed a date, and we're waiting for a response. We did hear back, and they chose December 7th to begin negotiations, so we're looking forward to that process. But I just wanted to say, if you happen to receive any more communications on this subject, if you could just please let people know that nothing's been proposed or rejected yet by either side, and we haven't even met or to discuss ground rules about how we're gonna work together, but we are planning to start the process on December 7th, and we're looking forward to a collaborative process.
Thank you, Carrie, that's helpful to clear things up, so thank you. You know, I'm actually just going to mention, since we have a bit of an audience here, and sometimes we lose people when we get to subcommittee reports, I had a conversation on my way here this evening with Tom Mayo, the town manager, and over the past couple days, there have been some conversations in the community, within the leadership team, about establishing a mental health awareness task force or team, and so, talking to Tom today, what this is gonna look like, the town is establishing a mental health awareness team that will be staff-initiated, so it will be made up of staff members of the Town of Hingham, including Sue Sarnie, Aileen Walsh, who is the social worker for the Hingham Police Department, Mary Fuglio, who is the outreach coordinator for the senior center, Keith German, who is our Veterans Affairs representative for the town, and then two school representatives that we, Dr. Adams will be filling on that team. So they are already at work doing some things, actually, folks should, in the community, should expect an email tonight that comes from the town with resources, guidance, sort of frequently asked questions, where to go to get help. And then tomorrow, or sorry, Wednesday evening, there is going to be an event for adult-only at the senior center from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a session to be conducted by a group called Aspire Health Alliance, and they are a, some people are familiar, they provide resources, help, show people where to go, so it'll be a session with them for folks to talk, to get more information, to learn, you know, how to talk to people, how to reach out to folks, so some really great initiatives being undertaken. And then additionally, there will be another community-led organization made up of some elected officials and community representatives to just help, you know, bring the community together and to, you know, keep us all well and safe, so I just wanted to let folks be made aware of that.
The day is Tuesday.
Sorry, Wednesday.
Wednesday, 7:00 to 8:00.
7:00 to 8:00 p.m. At Senior Center.
Senior Center.
Yes. All right, that is it for communications then. Unfinished business, we have none. Love when we have no unfinished business, but now onto new business, because there's a lot to do. So, 7.1, to discuss Kids in Action Elementary Strings Pilot Program and act as appropriate.
I'll welcome Joanne Bellis to come on, come on up. Either sit at the table or at the podium, whichever you prefer.
I'll get them to the video so that people can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Official.
Never mind. Yes. But you prefer, but we'll defer to Harbor Media.
So my name is Joanne Bellis, and I'm the Fine Arts Director here in Hingham, and today, I'm bringing up proposal for a pilot program to bring back our after-school strings program for third and fourth grade. We previously had a tuition-based after-school strings program that during COVID had shut down. It was a natural opportunity for us to look at a way to reevaluate the things that were working well and the things that needed improvement. Over the years, we have run into more complex challenges with after-school programming. It was being run as a separate organization from the public schools, and that was becoming unsustainable for a teacher to manage, so we wanted to bring that more formally into the school system through Kids in Action, which already has a partnership with the schools and resources such as a nurse that can be shared between schools as needed, so there are natural supports built in through the Kids in Action structure in terms of both resources that help students, but also in terms of management and budgeting, and the way that money is collected, and student information is organized. It's, the structure is already there, making it much more easy for us to manage, and also getting the management into a separate organization so that our teachers aren't so directly impacted by that. So we're proposing a pilot after-school. We're also changing the structure a little bit so that hopefully to recruit teacher retention, it can be hard to find teachers from only the hours of three to four, four days a week, so staffing can be a significant challenge with our strings program. So we're hoping to pilot a program with three sessions, 45-minute sessions, a 3:15 session, a 4:15 session, and a 5:15 session, to see if there's family demand for that. We want to see if families would be interested in those time slots, because it may help us recruit teachers. And we want to cap our lessons at 10 students each, so that teachers and students are having kind of an equal experience going through the program. So we're gonna run that pilot through South Elementary, I'm collaborating with Aisha on the budget, and Jackie Sansoni through Kids in Action, and our proposed fee is $325 for 15 weeks of lessons. I think you, if you look at other competitive music programs, just to give you some perspective, South Shore Conservatory charges $75 for a 45-minute private lesson, or $1,200 for a 16-week semester. So by offering group lessons, it's, even though it's tuition-based, it's still much more affordable than what a family might be able to find for a private lesson at a music school. So we feel that that is a price that's both accessible, but also that covers the cost of our instructors and our facilities cost. Based on the findings from the pilot, both from an administrative standpoint and also from a staff recruiting standpoint and from a student experience standpoint, we hope to expand this program to all four schools next year. So we're just gonna pilot some of the administrative logistics at South, and then with the hopes of bringing that back to all the elementaries next year based on the data that we collect this season. There's more information in the memo that went out, but I know it's a long agenda, so I'm gonna kind of keep it to that for now unless there are questions.
I would just add, the program's contingent on finding an instructor.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
So as soon as we find, it's contingent on being able to find someone to teach the lessons.
Thank you, Dr. Adams, yeah.
I just have one quick question. Sure. I just thought, just a comment, I think this is wonderful, I'm a big fan of the program, and I think it'll be helpful for when they start fifth grade, when they get to pick their instruments. Do these students have to be in the Kids in Action program, or?
No, that's a great question, thank you for clarifying that. So it's open, even the pilot actually is open to anybody in the district, so even if a student doesn't attend South, if family's able to provide transportation, so transportation is in the memo too, the transportation will be the responsibility of the families just for this pilot, but it is open to anybody in the district, they do not have to be in Kids in Action, we're mostly using the Kids in Action structure to manage the administrative logistics, but open to anyone in the district.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Does the money include instrument rental?
It does not.
Okay.
No, so there is a separate fee for instrument rentals, families are welcome to rent from whoever they choose, or if you have an instrument, that's totally fine. We do have a vendor that we partner with who offers a rate just for the HASS program, and that information will be included in the registration packet for families.
So, curious about the, thank you for doing this, because the program's amazing, my kids did it, so thank you for bringing it back. The teacher rates, are they gonna be the full rates, given what the kid, well, how many kids are gonna be in the program, will they get the full amount that the kids are paying, or, and this might be a business question, will there be revolving funds related to it, any excess, and what might that look like?
Right, so the, it will not be the full amount of the tuition that will go to the teachers, because there will be facilities fees as well, in terms of the space and the utilities and other things in that area that we'll have to contribute to as well. And it will operate as part of the KIA revolving account, so that will be part of that as well.
Thank you.
And our intent was to pay a teacher a rate, an hourly rate, collecting, depending on the number of students that enroll, making sure that we cover our costs, and then produce an hourly rate for the teachers, that will be in the posting.
Okay, sounds great, thank you. Nathan?
Actually, a few quick questions about the program.
Sure.
Thinking that's like a small program, does this have like a performance element to it, or is it more focused just on the lesson?
That's a really good question. So we're gonna, at least for this first iteration, we're gonna move more toward a model of a recital at the end, that is during their final lesson. So previously, the HASS program did concerts with the public schools, but that can get a little bit tricky in terms of combining school programs with after-school programs, so I'm gonna try the recital model, where the last lesson is going to be a recital, and then I'm gonna seek some feedback on that.
So, and then also, building on that, is this program building more for ensemble playing or for like individual playing? Is it individual recitals or ensemble recitals?
So, it would be group lessons, so groups of 10 students, so the recitals would also be the full group, they would perform a group piece together, it would not be an individual one, one person at a time recital. Yeah, no, that's a good question, Nathan, yeah, yep. So the goal is to get kids playing together. It's, we're offering a different experience than you might have at South Shore Conservatory, or it's to make it a little bit more accessible.
Anybody else? Questions? Yeah, I think it's great, so thank you for putting together, together piloting it, and to Jackie in South School for hosting it. Does someone want to make a motion to?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed after-school strings pilot program through Kids in Action at South Elementary School beginning January 2023.
I will second that, all right. Any further discussion? No? All right, we'll call, Carrie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Ally.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Ness.
Aye.
I'm aye as well. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 7.2, to discuss Kids in Action pre-K Foster Spanish immersion and to act as appropriate.
So I'll invite Erica Pollard, the Director of World Languages, to come up.
Hello, Erica, thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Innovative idea.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this idea, so the proposal that I think you guys all have a copy of in your packet tonight is to pilot a pre-K program, again, through the Kids in Action existing program, through, at, excuse me, through the existing Kids in Action program at the Foster School for the 23-24 school year, including just a single classroom that would offer a Spanish immersion curriculum. So, similar to the existing Kids in Action classroom that already exists, we would enroll about 20 students with two teachers and one assistant. The model would be a partial immersion model, where most of the day would take place in Spanish immersion, with a literacy block that would take place in English, to ensure that students are gaining the sort of pre-literacy skills that they're gonna need to be successful in kindergarten. The day would be from 8:30 to 2:00 p.m., and the proposal is based on some really interesting research that's been conducted over the last 50 years about the results about the results of immersion programs, which really show across the board, time and again, that immersion shows great results for students not only learning their second language, but that it also provides them with good skills in their first language. Um, I've summarized the research in this memo for you, but if you have questions about the specifics, I would be happy to answer them. The budget for this particular program, which I think I'll, I'll defer to Aisha on specific budget questions, um, but would come to nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars annually, which if you look at the comparison chart, is very competitive in comparison with other preschool programs in the area. And I think would offer a really unique opportunity for students to develop these Spanish skills really early on that are going to serve them well as they continue their education. Uh, we are proposing sort of a public announcement of this program in December. We would have informational meetings in January and have registration by February fifteenth. Uh, registration would take place by a lottery, and we would inform the families that have been selected for the program in March.
I would just add, um, this Foster currently has a space, um, that could be used for this purpose. Um, we also are coming to you early, seems a little early, but it requires some research and some, um, advertising and communication creation of materials to really explain this to the community. Um, I think another question you might ask is, will this continue into kindergarten, first grade? I mean, I think it's, we're calling it a pilot to see what the interest is from the community, um, in such a program. We do know that, um, in, um, Massachusetts and on the, um, um, in the area, there is great demand for early childhood language programming, um, as seen by preschool programs all along, um, the South Shore and North Shore and in the Boston area. So we believe there'll be interest, um, from the community. Um, and, but want, need to get started with some of the pre-planning, um, communication and packaging and information to, to start to recruit families, um, into the program. So that's our reason for doing it a little early in November, coming before you now.
And I have been, um, in communication with Jackie Sansoni about the existing preschool program, um, that Kids in Action already runs. You know, we've met to discuss sort of what the curriculum would look like. And, um, the goal here is that, uh, Jackie will be our early, early childhood education expert, and I will help with the language pedagogy. And I think that, you know, by working together, I think we have a really strong program in the works, um, that I think is really unique in this area.
We want to thank Jackie. I know Jackie couldn't be here.
She's done a lot of work on this already.
Yeah, she couldn't be here on both proposals, but we want to thank her for her support and working collaboratively with folks to sort of develop both proposals.
Yes.
Did you do a, I didn't notice, was there a cost comparison for Su Escuela?
Um, we did not name the schools.
Okay.
Uh, that we're doing in comparison.
I'm just wondering, that being the, the language immersion program that's also in Hingham.
Yes.
I'm sort of focused on that one.
I don't know how, how.
I can't recall which one it is, but it is one of those.
It's on there.
Okay, great, thank you.
I wasn't sure if I could say.
And the hours were chosen to sort of help with, um, arrival and dismissal, so they'll occur at times at either, I believe they're occurring after arrival, um, and before dismissal. So it won't interfere with current dismissal and arrival.
Oh, yeah, Ally?
Yeah, just two quick questions. Um, is there financial assistance available for families to make it accessible if they can't afford it?
So for that one, what we've done is that there's a, um, a tuition scale that we use for full-day kindergarten. So we'll use that same scale here as well.
And then is the goal, um, you mentioned that you consider expansion if it goes well. Is the goal then to keep it at the new Foster School and use some of that lovely new space?
Yes. Potentially. Again, it's, this is a pilot to see what the interest would be, and given what interests we, um, see, we'll, can build upon that to grow the program.
I think it's excellent. I love it. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Um, so I have a question about Foster. Uh, I'm assuming there are no other alternatives. I guess I'm thinking about, um, I could envision some people being nervous about, okay, there's going to be disruption going on at the school. Do I want to, you know, participate in this program next year, given that? Are there, were there any other alternatives and we just couldn't come up with one? I guess I'm kind of assuming the answer is yes.
Space, the space limitations.
And I think our interest was to consider that since we are building, now building a new school, that will include a significant amount of pre-K classrooms, that this was, we could pilot this next year and consider how we might grow. Um, because we'll be growing the pre-K program at the Foster Building. So, um, that was the interest in really thinking about the Foster, the ability to grow the program as the building, um, is built.
And then maybe one follow-up. If we, um, how many people will we need to, to say we're going to go forward with this? To, to sign up for it? I guess, I, because I'm still thinking about this. Are we potentially going to have a lower than anticipated turnout based on that concern and it would?
Right, and then there's certainly a cutoff point at which it doesn't, it's not financially viable. And I'm not sure exactly what that number is.
What we'll do on that is just to break even analysis on that, just to make sure that we're at least covering our costs. Um, and in terms of, and because it's a pilot, we're also looking at, um, in terms of whether we would use, we would, um, we could, we could use some funding from KIA as well too, to help get through the pilot.
Sure.
And then hopefully in the year afterwards, we'll see how that goes. So that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of how does the advertising go? What's the response like? And determining where we go forward or not.
I do think that even though, you know, Foster might be, uh, a little noisier next year than some of the other buildings, I think there's going to be interest in this program. I think that the existence of other immersion programs in this area shows that there is an appetite for this, and I think that it will be popular.
Is there any, sorry, one more question. Is there a concern, I guess I could anticipate potentially concern from existing foster families that are already nervous about, you know, well, the next eight weeks, there's not going to be recess, uh, that we can, or, and I know the principal is doing a great job of thinking through, you know, can we have alternatives? And I know this is next year, but wow, this is already going to be a hard year, and now we're putting more people in. I don't know that there's an answer, but I, uh, what, what would we say to those parents, I guess, uh, community members?
I mean, I think that the primary concern in terms of space is a space that's currently not being used.
Yep.
So, you know, the building has the potential, it has the potential capacity to house this many more students. And so, um, I think that the answer would be that we have the space for them.
I think that, um, sort of recess and lunch, lunches occur in the classroom. Recession would be at times, it's probably a morning recess, and then the late afternoon recess that sort of don't compete necessarily with, um, the K-five program. So, um, we've worked with, um, Matt, Principal of the, at the Foster, and he says he's very excited by it, um, and loves the idea of having little ones, um, in the building. And he says that he, this can, that he's confident this can work.
Great.
Michelle, I.
Yep, go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, um, so I, I love this. I think it's, it's great. And, um, and I agree with you, I think there will be an appetite for it. If for some reason there wasn't, would it be open to other students in the South Shore outside of Hingham if you wanted to make sure we had capacity?
That's a good question.
That is a great question that I don't know the answer to.
I think we'd have to consider, um, whether the Kids in Action, Kids in Action doesn't have a current procedure or policy on that. I don't think so.
Right now, it's only for this, in-district kids.
It's only in-district students.
All right, well, I think it's great either way.
And to the question about, um, recess and whatnot, I can also, I'll bring this to the school building committee to let them know that this is something that is being considered and just to make sure that we are, um, taking that into consideration as we're, um, finding the suitable space for the outdoor recess during the, during the construction period. There is definitely space available, um, so, um, but we'll make sure we keep that in mind too.
And the start and end times, is it a little bit off from when Foster starts and finishes? So that's, that will help.
Yeah.
And anyway, that'll help the, um, the flow of things, but I think most of my questions are going to be for Aisha. So looking at the current KIA, um, we had done an, an increase last year in January. This is higher. Do you anticipate the teachers, will be paying the teachers more because of the Spanish language?
So in terms of, in terms of that, um, I think that one of the things that we are considering is actually evaluating the current pre-K as well in terms of whether we will need to increase the fees for, for this upcoming year again. So that's something that we're evaluating at this time too. And with, um, contracts coming to an end as well, we're also looking at, um, the teach, the contracts for KIA too. So that will be part of the negotiation process. So, um, that will be part of the process.
Okay.
And we'll figure out costs based on where, uh, what, what the fees will be based on where our costs land.
Okay, and you said something about doing the break even, um, just to figure out how many kids we would need in order to break even, um, which I think is important, but then also remembering that bringing on staff, the insurance through KIA is paid through KIA, it's not paid by the town. So I think that's important for.
Yep.
My school committee members to remember.
Right.
And the other thing that I noted is that because it's going through KIA, we do have, um, the revolving fund is at two hundred and forty-three thousand, or at least the last time that I checked. Um, so, I mean, we could, we, if, if we don't think that we're going to get to break even, but we think that it is a program that will succeed in the future, I think it would warrant a discussion to talk about whether we use some of that revolving fund since we are trying to figure out ways to use that.
And some of the, some of the startup costs that we are looking at for the, for this program in terms of creating the classroom for the pre-K would require us using some of those funds as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so some of those, some of that fund, some of those funds will be for just setup of furniture and the general materials that you'd need for any pre-K classroom, and then some are Spanish-specific curriculum materials.
Okay, great.
I have one.
Yeah, one question.
And will the school nurse at Foster be part of that program? Or did, does that, would we need to hire another, um, nursing staff or?
So in terms of that, it all depends on, on the, on the needs of, of the students. We'd have to evaluate based on that, right?
Currently, the East Nurse Services the pre-K program.
Anything else? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Um. I'm going to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed pre-K Spanish immersion pilot program through Kids in Action at Foster Elementary School for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
And I will second. All right. Uh, further discussion?
Can I ask one more, sorry?
Yeah, no, that's what this time is for.
I'm hung up on this Foster thing.
No.
What, what, if we, if we, uh, why next year, I guess? Versus, you know, why, 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 um, probably the last couple of years would make sense? Were we considering this a few years ago? Did this just come in this year? And what would be the harm in waiting a year when we know there's going to be just a lot going on in that building, um, next year?
Yeah, I would say that immersion has always been on my radar as a program that I would love to run. I think that it's incredibly beneficial for our students and for our community as a whole. I think it's just a really wonderful thing for us to be able to bring forward. Um, in terms of why now, I think the answer was that the space exists at Foster. There's a classroom that we can use for this, and so, um, I think there was, we didn't see a reason to wait.
And is the, one final question on this. I think. Uh, the classroom itself, and we obviously are building this new school because there's a lot of existing classrooms that we're using that are not very good. Like what is this classroom that we're not using right now? Is it be, why aren't we using it right now? Is it because it's like the worst of all of the classrooms or? I'm just thinking through the experience of these kids that are going to be there, and I get pre-K are probably more amenable to no windows, and I don't know if it's no windows, but, um, I don't know if this is a question for you, Dr. Adams.
I think, remember that there's a bubble that, there are some grade levels that have four, and there are some grade levels that have three.
Yep.
And so this is one of those classrooms that's created because of the bubble, um, where we go from four to three to four, depending on the grade level.
Okay, so the, the classroom itself is not worse than?
No, it's an existing classroom.
Not great classroom, which is fine.
Yeah, no, but I'm with you, like, it's not, it's not in the basement or something. It's an, it's an.
It's not, not being used because it's not good enough to use.
What if the boiler goes?
No, got it, no, it's an existing classroom.
Gather around the boiler.
Created by those bubbles that exist because we have different class sizes at each grade.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
Great questions. Um, all right, are we good more? Any other questions, comments? No? All right, um, moved and seconded, so I will take a roll call vote. Carrie?
Aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And no, Matt, and those are great points, so I will, um, I'll assure that we're bringing that up with the building committee too, so that they're aware that this is happening. All right, uh, seven point three, to discuss the South School Improvement Plan and Act As Appropriate.
Just while I'm walking over, I just wanted to add that we did have a Kids in Action preschool at South, and it worked out beautifully. We were able to use a lot of our infrastructure, and, um, the staggering of the arrival and the departure time is very important. But it worked out great.
Okay.
It was hard when they left.
Yes, I know.
Probably here than I need water.
I'm her backup.
Mary, if you want to take the clicker, we can see if it works.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so you can click yourself ahead.
If I go ahead, can I go back?
Yes.
Ah, there we go.
So over the next couple of months, um, through January, we'll have, um, the schools present their school improvement plans. They're presenting a short update on the progress last year, um, as well as their school improvement, um, for the remainder of this year. And our hope is to also extend those school improvement plans into next year given that it's already halfway through the year. However, having, um, both, all of the schools come back, um, in June or early July to share their progress at the end of this year to give an update and then move on to next year is our hope. Go, take it away, Mary.
All set. So I'm honored to be up here with Lori Jacobs, our Assistant Principal. Uh, we all believe in teamwork makes the dream work, and we definitely, uh, love working as a team. So I'm grateful for her being here tonight. And other members of our team who I'll introduce in a couple minutes. So, um, South Schools endeavor continues to be to prepare the child for the path, not the path for the child, involving the whole village, all stakeholders. That's right, I'm going to do this. Um, so extra special thank you, obviously, to the school committee. Everybody's worked so hard in the last few years. Well, most of my career, I've seen everybody work really hard, but the last few years have been unbelievable. Um, the Hingham Public Schools Administration, everybody's been amazing, um, from two twenty Central Street to, uh, the Principal and Assistant Principal Team. I'm grateful to be part of that team, and I know Lori is as well. And the South Schools staff, uh, who were just amazing. We have three people here tonight, Eugene Bezinski, our Teacher Leader and Fizzed Teacher, Leanne Turnick, fifth-grade teacher, and Tracy Manning, also fifth-grade teacher. So they've had a busy time lately with the Veterans Day Assembly and the big feast coming up, so I'm greatly appreciative that they're all here. Uh, I feel so lucky with the, we both feel so lucky with the students and families, and of course, the whole South School community and the PTO, and our school council members. And this is a list of our school council members. Eugene happens to also be on school council, Vanessa Brier. We also have Karen Johnson, who actually was originally a South School parent and is now a grandmother, so that's very exciting. And Diana D. and Melissa Manus and Jen Benham. Thank you for being the school committee liaison this year. So tonight, we're just going to quickly talk about, uh, the plan process, and we're going to talk about twenty-one to twenty-two, because the last time we presented was just before that, and then improvement plan updates for this year and ongoing themes that are still relevant with new twists. So this is the process. I know you all have it in your packet, uh, so feel free to look that over. And if you have any questions about that, let me know. These are many of the considerations we use, they're just samples, obviously, but we try to use everything from all the stakeholders. And I'm proud to announce we gained a student today, so we have five hundred and three students at this point. That's why that's in red. So it's very exciting. She moved here from China, from an international school, so it's lots of fun to welcome new students. Um, speaking of welcoming, our staff's incredibly welcoming. I always love to include a picture of the whole staff because they're just phenomenal. They go above and beyond all the time, and especially during the years of the pandemic and now as we enter the new normal. So there's a lot of changes that have to happen, and everybody says, sure, I'll do it, I'll do that. So we just both feel very, very fortunate, and we also feel very fortunate to have an amazing PTO. So we're, you know, we're buzzing with leadership volunteer spirit and people who just want to have teamwork make the dream work at South, and we're very grateful for that. So in twenty-one to twenty-two, um, you know, the big progress is we did start, as you know, we then called it HTSS, but it does make more sense to call it MTSS. And, uh, we started that going forward. We were fortunate to have, um, a new math and literacy specialist position added at that time and received some federal funding, and that was when we first hired our new math and reading interventionists. And it was amazing what was able to be a. And it was amazing what was able to be accomplished, given that we were also doing test and stay every day. And there's a lot of people in this room who did a lot for that, especially Mrs. Jacobs. So lots of heroes who kept children in school so they could have interventionists work with them. And they could have an all hands-on-deck approach. We had a new Math Olympics program and started using Tang puzzles, which proved to be very, very popular. And, I'm sorry, I need glasses for this. This is further than I expected. Many staff members were involved. And it's the continued support of the PLCs, our teams itself, who work closely together and meet together with each other all the time. We always talk about learning styles, differentiated learning. And there was much continued, even during COVID, training of staff. And they're all always trying to make themselves better with all kinds of different programs. And I know Katie's been working really hard on that this year, and we're very grateful for that, so that continues. So one of the things that we're very proud of, especially last year, is that kinesthetic and collaborative, collaborative learning continued, even with all the obstacles of test and say and math and things like that. Some obviously happened, as you'll see from the future pictures that we're going to show you, with masks. Some happened without, because as you know, as of February, we took the masks off. So these are just some examples. Kindergarten held their Alpha Fest. And these were all things that we had not done since 2018, 19, fully. So it was very exciting. Tour around the world for Grade One. The poetry writing festival happened in Grade Two. The Bottle Project and Third Grade Timeline Tour in Grade Three. Grade Four had the Box City and the States Fair. And some of these were new initiatives last year. And Fifth Grade had the good old booth day celebrating our Western Hemisphere. And I know there's many people in this room who've created houses and recipes and things like that for that with their children. And that's where the children take on a country in Central or South America and/or Canadian provinces. And they learn about it all year and then have a wonderful culmination at the end. And what was very exciting is that we got to have our field day at the end of the year and our South School Talent Show. So that in and of itself, just to bring it back, was just great to bring some things back. So here are some pictures of the Alpha Fest and the second grade poetry and the Grade Five Booth Day. So you can see that, you know, we went along through the year and just, history will show that things changed as we went along, which is amazing. And this wonderful collage of many things that happened. So, you know, if you take your hands and you go like this and you make a triangle and you draw a line down the middle, we always want to have equal sides to social, emotional, as well as academic. So the first goal obviously centered around academic. And the second goal centers around social, emotional. So we always, and I know all schools do, try to marry the two. Because if I'm socially, emotionally happy and I'm loving that I'm learning about this province or whatever, then I'm also going to learn, feel good about it and then learn the academic, the academic piece as well. So we continue to develop physical and emotional well-being through our buzz awards. We try to catch children being good. We often catch them being good, and that's a wonderful thing. They receive a buzz, a buzz award. And then we have different buzz assemblies all year. For example, in October, we'll welcome all the new students and staff. We just had an incredible Veterans Day ceremony the other day. I don't think there was a dry eye in the house by the end of it. And I'm grateful to the Fifth Grade Team for making sure that that happened, as well as our PTO. And we have all different songs. You know, we believe that a school that sings together stays together. So we sing songs at the buzz assemblies. And we do, of course, have our mascot, the Bee. And the Bee likes to buzz around at all of these things. Our bulletin boards extend the theme. And the main theme, we have, be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, because that's not a misspelling, it's B-E-E on purpose. And be kinder than necessary is the theme of South School. So we also have buddy classes for that. That really picked up last year again. And we use the Toolbox Library and, of course, the Toolbox Program. And that is being completely integrated into South School's culture. And we're very excited about the planned playground that Mrs. Jacobs planned last year with the PTO, which was planning sensory tables, they put in a stage, bricks. We have musical instruments. So we're trying to reach all the learning styles, not just have a soccer field. And nothing against soccer, but, you know, some people want to be on the stage and not playing soccer, or maybe play basketball or whatever it is. So we really try to, in academics as well as social, emotional, have something for everybody. I mentioned the Toolbox Program. And it was wonderful that activities occurred at all grade levels for the children when they were moving on. Because, you know, when you really think about it, they wore masks till February and then, you know, didn't even know some of the people, you know, until February, their faces. So in June, we had move-forward activities, and that worked out great. These are all the tools. I know you've seen them all before. I'm going to take my breathing tool out right now. Every, every classroom has a What Does It Mean to Be Kind book. And that is very center to what goes on with the Kind of the Necessary theme. And we have libraries for Toolbox, as well as kindness, that are used constantly in morning meetings and classrooms and all kinds of situations at South. So we have a common culture. Here's some pictures of the wonderful things that have happened to the playground. The stage is on the top left. You'll see the sensory table. We're working on the gardens this year. And of course, we have many other things painted on the blacktop for the children to do. All over school, we try to have our themes up. And you can see that we have a kindness bulletin board from last year. You know, the Wings to Fly, as well as we have many. We love our chalkboards. They all have the message so that everybody knows that they're included. And here is our first Bee of 21 to 22. It happened to be Nurse Cheryl, that some of you might be familiar with, who came in to sub for our Nurse Carol Lincoln. And we were very fortunate to have these wonderful nurses over the last couple of years. And you can see that our children, our buzz award winners from 21, 22, that particular buzz assembly, are sitting with, yes, we have a DeLorean. And we'll talk about why in a minute. So here is just some pictures of a big buzz assembly. We always love to announce the winners of the buzz assembly. And that, of course, is the fabric of our culture. And everything's integrated. And I can walk up to any child with a microphone and they can explain all of the Bee themes and, you know, the Toolbox and anything like that. And boy, do they like talking on the microphone. So it works for me because I get tired of talking on it, so it's great. So our other two, two goal, we have three other goals. Obviously, we want to continue family and community awareness of all of this, all of these supplemental activities that we have throughout the school. And we also want to promote communication, support, and collaboration with the parents being involved as well. So we continue the weekly newsletter. We include the Common Language. And of course, the Toolbox tidbits is part of it so that the parent can read what the Toolbox quote of the week is and also reinforce that at home. I had a parent tell a funny story about going to the dentist, and the child was sitting in the dentist's chair going like this. And the dentist said, what is she doing? And she said, she's using her breathing tool. So it's all good. We constantly, during Test and Stay, Mrs. Jacobs and I would sit and do daily communication to all the parents. I know all the other principals did that as well, and principal teams. So it was so important to keep people informed. We also have a Fast Fax that's a summary of our handbook. We had a new families reception, even with masks and all, and a new student lunch, and pretty much believe in constant communication. I always say I'd rather be overdressed than underdressed. And I would also much rather over-communicate than under-communicate. And those of you who know me know that is true about the over-communication. We, of course, work on survey groups and use survey data. Parent involvement was enhanced post-COVID. And we got many, many, many letters and accolades at the end of the year for bringing back a lot of normal. So we were thrilled with that. And of course, safety is a number one. I just had a chat with a student this afternoon about that, and he agreed with me. So we have renewed staff training yearly. Obviously, we pour over our red emergency folders and books, and surveillance equipment is utilized. And we, Mrs. Jacobs is expert at constantly keeping us on track as far as safety is concerned. We are so grateful to all for 21, 22. And in spite of test and stay, and I do want to thank the nurses, Lori J, and many staff members, and I know Mr. Bazinski was very involved, that would help keep kids in school and give as normal an experience as possible. We were fond of saying that we ran an urgent care as well as a school, and everybody did their part. And it's pretty incredible to think back on it, what we were able to accomplish. So as you can see, and as you all probably remember, our Back to the Future theme that, you know, we started to do, we thought summer of 21, was it summer of 21? Yes, we were all set. And we had a Back to the Future theme. And of course, we all know that things changed in August of that year. So as you can see, Back to the Future 1 got off the ground. It was a little bit hindered by COVID's third year. But now, ooh, yeah, where did you go? Oh, you went way ahead.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Time's ticking.
She's got the hook on me already. Okay. Keeps me, keeps me in line. All right, so the plans for, so now we're going, plans for 22 to 23 from Back to the Future 1, we decided, oh, yes, there's more than one movie, Back to the Future 2, let's make sure that we get right back to where we were. And so with the new district plan, and we thank everyone who worked hard on that, we continue to provide equitable academic excellence. Again, Back to the Triangle, it's very important, split it in two, academics and social, emotional. We want to bring all of our students to their highest potential and, of course, take care of any remediation that needs to be done as a result of the pandemic. So obviously, we're going to continue all new initiatives, especially MTSS, also known as HTSS. I'm fond of saying that we were so fortunate last year to be able to bake the cake, given what we were all dealing with. And now we're baking a very fancy cake. And we're very fortunate because we now have a new common across all elementary school schedule. And it's helping us to place people, the interventionists, in the classrooms in a more efficient way. And we now have iReady, which is a diagnostic tool. We have MyPath in both ELA and math. And these are all wonderful additions, if you will. They're decorations on the top of this great, wonderful new cake. And it's just been fantastic. Also, continued support, obviously, of our PLCs, our teams. So far, we've had professional development on Wednesdays. And this past Wednesday, last week, we were able to have some PLC time as part of the PD time, so that was absolutely amazing. Obviously, we used to always do staff peer observations, and we're going to reinstitute those, reinstate those, rather. And obviously, professional development, analyzing all assessment, and continuing awareness of learning styles. It is so important because we're all different. And we are introducing, actually reinforcing, because a lot of our teachers were using the UDL approach. And very important for multiple means of engagement. And Goal Two is, again, take your triangle. Now we're crossing over to the social, emotional to provide equitable opportunities to develop students' physical and well-being, physical well-being and emotional, of social responsibilities, while fostering a sense of belonging to the greater community. And we continue to meet with our equity team constantly. We want to make it so everyone feels like they belong. And it's all about the Hingham Together, the Hingham Together theme. And so far, we've had many buddy class activities, which has been so exciting, because those were things, you know, I know they sound simple, but they were things we could not do during COVID. And it's so fantastic to have them back again. And the Common Language, we always reinforce it. We call it South School 101. We do it at the first staff meeting, constantly talk about it. It's constantly in the newsletters. I see some smiling South School parents. They've probably read it many times, so they probably could do this presentation for me. We are very fortunate that we have a new counselor this year. So the Guidance Initiative is already off the ground and very successful. The adjustment counselor and the school psychologist are able to do more specific things while the guidance counselor is doing more Tier One types of things. Actually, I ran into her today on the way out, and she said, I just taught four classes in a row. It was absolutely amazing. So she is very busy, and the whole school is getting to get all of the curriculum in the Tier One. And then, of course, we take care of Tier Two and Tier Three with the rest of the staff. Again, our kindness library, Toolbox Library, those are our things we're always going to have. We have new songs that we're going to sing at our assemblies. As I said, we had a beautiful Veterans Day assembly the other day. And Mrs. Jacobs happens to have a video, but we are sparing you because of the time thing tonight. "Thankful for the USA," sung by 600 people to our veterans. And it was absolutely, I could barely speak after it. It was so phenomenal. It really was. And here we are with our, you know, moving forward. We're, this is, this was from the first buzz assembly in October. The staff, thanks to Mr. James Bailey, who plays the guitar, he's a third grade teacher. We sang "We Are Going to be Friends." We brought that back again. That was a rendition from 2019. Some of you did get to see that video that time. We had more time that night. And of course, we're going to continue Toolbox. And right now, we are, we did the Courage Tool. We moved it forward because we do it with Veterans Day. It goes so beautifully. And we're doing Personal Space and Empathy in December. How appropriate. And then all of the others get done until March. And we actually added one at South School. We have a Sense of Humor Tool that we try to keep, so, and we celebrate all of that. And then the rest of the year, we summarize that constantly. And then we marry all the other themes with it. And it's constant in morning meetings. I'm so grateful to the staff. Morning meetings in the hallways, you'll hear the cafeteria staff talking about it. You know, everybody just kind of walks and talks the same language. And that's what's super important. So we want to continue to provide parents and, obviously, community awareness of and access to existing activities that take place. Obviously, continue the Family Buzz, continue the Toolbox tidbits. The Back to School Nights were swimmingly successful. The South School Handbook was updated. And I thank my fellow principals and assistant principals who helped a great deal with that, especially the technology piece. Thank you. And we have reintroduced the specialists, the nurses, and the counselors' corner for our newsletter as well. And two-way communication is so important, like I said, over-communicate and collaborate with parents and communities. So we want to ensure that that takes into account equity and belonging, for sure. So one of the things this year that we're introducing is a flag project. And we actually, when our building was built in 1999, put up some flags. And they're still up there. And eight years ago, I thought to myself, we need to take those flags down and make sure there's more flags. And then, you know, things got busy and then COVID hit. So I'm very excited to tell you that the flag project is well underway. And actually, Mr. Johnson, one of our wonderful custodians, is going to take down the old flag so we can wash them. And we're going to put up all the flags starting this Saturday. And hopefully, by sometime in January, we'll be able to dedicate all of them. Obviously, we want the parents to be aware of everything that's going on. We've already had the Veterans Day Assembly. We've had the Harvest Party. We've had the South School Social. So as you can see, Back to the Future 2 is in full swing, for sure. We are also looking forward to offering some parent workshops on cyber, cyber safety. And also, you guessed it, on Toolbox, so they will know all about it. And thanks to Mr. Bee, we have brought back Fly South. And it's going swimmingly well, right? How many students?
120.
Hundred and twenty. We traditionally had like 50 to 60. So yeah, we've changed how we did registration and communication. Just kind of mainstreamed everything and it works really well.
It has. And he's doing a great job running it. We're so grateful to you. Then we have a wonderful parent, Sarah McAvery, who's brought back the Box program. That's the early morning exercise program. And grateful to Katie Campbell, one of our teachers, and Shannon Gill, who have brought back the Homework Heroes program. So goal five, obviously, we want to keep everybody safe and everybody aware of safety without obviously telling everybody exactly what we do. But we are working, hopefully, this year on physical enhancements to the sidewalk. And obviously, they review the revised handbook as well. And further enhance lockdown procedures. You can always keep enhancing those. And can continue coordination with our safety officer. And we had, actually, actually had a bike, brought our bike rodeo back. That was all amazing. And the final pièce de resistance is the bus pledge. So we were having some issues on buses. You know, children get a little rambunctious. And Ms. Jay and Mr. B. came up with a bus pledge. And I think we have a picture of it, right? The next thing. Oh, there's the bike rodeo and the bus pledge. And all of the students signed the pledge. So you can see either one of us out there with a laminated copy every day. And as they get on the bus, we remind them that they sign the bus pledge. So, you know, it's, it's called creating personal responsibility and making them aware that, you know, they can do it as well. Because a lot of people say, well, can't we put a monitor on the bus? And we totally understand that. But then where else are you going to cut? And I know I'm talking to the right group about that. So, you know, teaching the personal responsibility. Thank you for the bus pledge. And so far, so good. Knock on wood. So ultimately, our South Village continues to work very hard to respect all learners while preparing them for the path. It takes a village, you know, to prepare the child for the path. I want to thank you all, every person in this room, for being involved. And we're always grateful and thankful. We do have this in our lobby right now. And everybody wrote on the feather what they're thankful for. So come by and see it. There's lots of great things on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. That is a very thorough report. And no, really very helpful. And a special thank you to Mary Eastwood. You have been a beacon of hope over the last few years in particular. And also just in your leadership and helping mentor all our new elementary principals. We really thank you.
Well, it was easy. And, 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 you know, they're just amazing. And I always like to sing, "I get by with little help from my friends." And they are just amazing human beings. And, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been very, very, very grateful to be able to, to help out. And actually, they help me just as much. So thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or anything from the committee members?
I don't have any questions. I'll just say that was a wonderful presentation. You know, I want to go back tomorrow. I miss, I always miss South. My three kids are out of, now that my three kids are out of there. I just wanted to just quickly say how much I am happy to hear that Fly South is back and Homework Heroes and Box. I know those are really great programs. And then I also just wanted to say that how much I'm impressed with the intergenerational activities that you have with the, with the seniors, with the senior center. But I think it's your third, the third grade kids?
Pen pals.
The pen pals. I learned about this at the school, at my recent school council meeting. And I just want to give a shout out to that. So, thank you. Right there with you. That's it.
Anything else, Carrie? You good?
Sorry.
No, I said, are you good? Did you have any questions or anything?
No, I don't see any questions here.
Okay.
But that was great. I really enjoyed listening to them.
Yeah.
Is the song available to be emailed out? Because I really want to hear the song.
I know.
The Veterans Day?
Yeah. Oh, Veterans Day? Yes.
I'll speak for the committee that says we're all enthusiastic.
Well, that's it. Oh, somebody's hands up. Yep.
Sorry, somebody just made a comment that the chat is disabled. So I don't know if you want to just explain how people can make comments and ask questions.
Yes, if people have questions or comments, you can use the raise hand function. And then actually, Carrie or Sheri will let me know if, if there's anyone with their hand raised that wants to be addressed, that wants to address the committee. All right, Matt, you had a question?
Yeah, maybe it's kind of a general comment. Or maybe it's a question. So this is great. Thank you for this. My question in general across the four schools is, given all of the needed remediation from, from COVID in terms of academics, how are we sharing things that work really well that you might be finding, you know, at your school or at other schools? Like how, because, I mean, the whole nation is going through this right now. Everyone's kind of like coming, trying to figure this out on our own. The more that we can, at least within our own community, share what's going well, I think would be, and I saw some of it. But I'm curious.
I need to go to the mic, right?
Sure, I guess, yeah.
Okay. That is an excellent question, which we quite often get. And I thank you for asking it. We are joined at the hip, pretty much. I just got off a Zoom. How long were we on the Zoom today, Greg?
I always run that one out.
Yeah, the four of us. We're constantly, and then, of course, our assistant principals are the same way. They constantly talk to each other. So pretty much, I think you're going to hear a lot of the same from Greg, which I know he's going to do an awesome job. You're going to hear a lot from him as well, the same. So a lot of these things, we sort of initiated together, as it was, and built them together. And that was true, I will say, and I thank you for thanking me. But I want to thank all of the principals who were here through the three years. And I know Melissa Smith was one of them. We just worked closely together. And one of the things she and I always talk about is we feel like that was one of the silver linings to COVID. Because we were able to Zoom. You know, we used to try to meet, but it was, you know, you know, you know what that's like. So we were able to constantly meet. And we still constantly meet and talk. And the assistant principals and the principals all try to talk. And I'm also so grateful to our curriculum directors because they pull it all together. And we meet with them as well. So I'm fond of saying, and I know some people in the audience are still laughing, that we're all ice cream. We have the same basic ingredients. And some may have chocolate chips, some may have peppermint sticks, some may have whatever floats your boat. But we basically are all, we're all in the same, we're all in the same ice cream store. And we just have, you know, little flavors that are different. We're making sure that we do it all. And we, did you ask a question about remediation as well?
I mean, I think you answered, yeah. Because I do think it is incredibly important to have each of the elementary schools' culture. And you can see that. But you can also see that, you know, there's certain things that are critical to be giving across the schools.
Exactly. So if you go to a restaurant, you want some water and maybe something else and a meal, the next restaurant will do the same. So it's the same kind of thing, except there might be a different flair on it. Another thing I didn't mention is that all these wonderful specialists that we gained from that budget, they all get together constantly. There was a meeting just today, as a matter of fact. So, and they're across schools. So there's so many across town things happening. Another thing that came out of COVID is a lot of the teams plan across town. There were some silver linings. And I will never forget, because I was lucky enough to be able to work with the fifth grade team, how they split up work during COVID. So across town gained a lot during that time.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Any, anything else from anyone?
Just, I don't think there's really an answer to this. But as part of looking at the show you're presenting, it's sort of our job to make sure that you have what you need to be able to do your job. I was going to ask you if, there was work over COVID clearly to right-size the staff of the schools and to make sure the schools had resources. Are you right, so like, do you have the staff that you need right now to get the work done that you need to get done? Is there still a wish list? Is there? I mean, not that anyone's getting a wish list this year, we know, but.
You do, you do realize that I've been here for a very long time. So I will tell you, back in the day, I used to run off all the papers like this. So yes, I feel like we are very fortunate and we have wonderful resources. But there are some wonderful initiatives that we could also have. You know, like the Kids in Action Spanish immersion school. There's always more that you can have. But what we have right now, I'm fond of telling the story that there was a superintendent back in the 90s, wonderful superintendent, who, and those of you who've been alive that long, you know that the late 80s, early 90s were a really tough time. And we had just built the cathedral and it got torn down because we had to cut everything. And I've now, since then, seen it get built again. And I hope it stays. That's all I have to say. Because I really think all of the things that we have, you know, the assistant department heads, we now have a finance director back again. Because I kept saying to everybody, you know, we had one. We had one back in the 80s. Allison, I don't know if you remember that far back. But, you know, it's, it's there and I hope it stays there. Because it is, I, I think so. Does everyone else agree with me? Melissa, Greg, everyone else? Yeah.
Mary, I'm sorry. Are you good?
I'm good.
No, it just made me my one thought that I was going to ask. Because I think that was one thing that we also, right, you have to find the silver linings and everything, right? So one of the things that we'd also talked about in the post-COVID new normal world was this is a chance to sort of reset and relook at things and get rid of old traditions, start new traditions, really bring things to the, to the 21st century. Are you, and I know there were a lot of, fair amount of changes in the schedule this year, recess and whatnot. How are, how do you feel like folks are adapting, both the staff, students?
So they, they may even speak to that. But generally speaking, I think we have to remember, and especially me, that school is not what it was back when we went to school. And there's a lot of chance for social and emotional interaction in the classroom. Just today, Matt shared on the videos when we were on Zoom about a class that he observed, learning about Venn diagrams. And the children were moving around and they were constantly talking to each other. So there's a lot of interaction during the school day that, you know, every time I sit and watch it, I'm in awe of how the teachers do it. And I think to myself, wow, I would have loved this as a student, you know, because I was told to sit in my seat and never move, you know? So there's so much interaction that goes on during the day. And we did, as you probably well know, need to meet the DESE minutes and make sure that we are. Because of course, we have to answer to DESE. It's very important. So that's where all of that came from. But I, the fifth grade team, I have an opinion. I think you found that you're able to better schedule your day. Am I right?
Yeah, I think we have longer academic blocks that, right, that we can do some things that, you know, maybe we were interrupted before, where we can do a whole class lesson and break into small groups. And that's, you know, kind of magical.
And they're interacting. Exactly. When I was a fifth grade teacher, if it was pouring rain, I'd say to them, I'll give it back to you in the spring. You know, when the 15-minute break would come along or the 10-minute break and they don't be, that's fine. And in the spring, we would stay out of next to 10 minutes or whatever. So, any other?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. All right. Well, that is our role as a school committee to approve the and accept the school improvement plan. So just, you want to make a motion this?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 South Elementary School Improvement Plan.
And I will second. Any discussion? All right. Carrie?
Hi.
Matt, I mean, sorry, Tim. Ally?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
I am an I as well. Great. Thank you so much. Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Item 7.4 is to discuss the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan and to act as appropriate. So we'll welcome Principal Greg Lamott. Welcome for your inaugural, your first of, we hope, many, many, many school improvement plans for Plymouth River.
Second senior elementary principal.
Just so you understood, I'm a former PRS parent here. So you'll get some love from this section.
Perfect. Well, Mary brought all the ingredients to bake the cake. So the cake's already been done. So she took my 10 minutes. Thank you. No, in all seriousness, no, though, thank you for having me tonight. It's going to be an enjoyment to talk about the successes we had in 2122 at PRS and then what we look forward to in the future and our plans. I do want to thank a lot of my team who has come here to support me. Kim O'Brien, Laura Falvey, Nancy Bucy, Katie Osterman, Susan Willis and Cara Kramer, and my assistant principal, Melissa Smith. They've all been people that I can go to and talk with and really, really discuss things openly and honestly with them. I believe in an open door policy. And they've all welcomed that open door policy to be able to have conversations. So as we move forward and talk about, we think about Plymouth River. Our mission statement is that we believe children are treasured and it's to foster a love of learning in an innovative, cooperative climate, which empowers all students to be competent, productive, caring, and responsible citizens. Our school council members for this year, Cassandra, Cassie Pacella and Julian Riley are the teacher reps. Christopher Christiansen and Jessica Foley are the parent reps. And Joan Silver is the community representative. Ms. Smith is, comes to all of our meetings. Ally Anderson is the school committee liaison. And then as we need others, as we hold our meetings, we will invite others to those, to those meetings. So let's do a plan recap of 2122. As I came into this, I kind of went big instead of going home. And we had five goals. So our first goal on academics was to identify grade level academic weaknesses as well as analyzing the impact of COVID-19 in regards to the achievement gap. Last year, we did call it HTSS, as Mary spoke about. And how do we implement that with a major role in helping students move forward from regression? One of the things that was said to me is you need to create a master schedule for everyone to be able to put a 30-minute reading intervention block and a 30-minute math intervention block. So it was the first time that PRS had had a master schedule that was implemented. We looked at that schedule. I reviewed it with the teams. We implemented it. And then after four to six weeks, I sat back down with the teams and I said, give me your feedback. Like, how's this going? What's going on? What can we move? What can we change? And then taking that information, we were able to move some things around that would best suit the needs of our students to make sure that we're utilizing all the staff to make the smallest groupings to give them the biggest bang for their buck. And so that was goal number one. As Mary said, we like to tie our academics to our social emotional. So goal number two, this is a goal in progress that we're retweaking just a little bit. But to strengthen and support the social emotional skills of all of our students and to provide interventions to support social, emotional, behavioral, and academic success with continuing to train and use the Toolbox strategies. So we set monthly school-wide focuses that aligned with Toolbox. We decrease, in our hope, to decrease office referrals, to socially talk amongst the students and regarding the theme and what does each of the tools mean and how do you use them. Shared with the parents in our, the smore newsletter that I use, what tool is being used and how they can become engaged partners at home with that tool. So if we were learning the Toolbox tool, we would give them, like, there's a little tape measure and he talks to you. And then it said, what does that Toolbox tool do? How do you use it at home? So it was ways that parents could also interact with those tools. We trained some more staff in CPI, crisis prevention, to engage with de-escalation strategies with our students. And then we met regularly the family child study team, which consists of myself, Ms. Smith, the nurse, the school adjustment counselor, the school psychologist, and the nurse. And we really looked at students and families who needed access to any resources that were available. How are we going to decrease tardiness and absenteeism, whether through letters, calling home, reaching out to the families? And also, how are we decreasing office referrals as we met as sort of a leadership team within the building? Number three was based on connections and how would we strengthen our school culture, which embraces a homeschool community collaboration. As we know, Mary calls it, it takes a village for us. It's just, how do we make that loop? How do we make that circle to make sure everyone is, is in the loop and on the same page to help support our students? So some of the things that I did last year as an interim was I reviewed the newsletter structure and transformed it to be a little bit more user-friendly. And we landed on staying with the smore that Ms. Smith had used. But how could we make the smore more interactive and more user-friendly to get more people looking at that website? Also, keeping with the tradition that Ms. Smith had left there, but tweaking it a little bit the week ahead. The week ahead is what we have for, for the staff. And that sort of says what's coming up for the, for the week ahead. So they can plan on when someone's coming in for STEAM Week, what's happening for each grade level? When's it happening? Where's it happening? So everyone is well informed. So they know what, what parts of the building are being used, what parts we need to be a little bit more quiet in. And then from there, we also looked at the PRS website. We found it a little bit chunky and clunky. So what could we do to add it to make things of finding more, finding parents able to find information easier and to get our admin assistants trained in editing that website and content? We use right now the platforms frequently of Twitter and Facebook. Don't know what's going to happen with Twitter. So we started an Instagram account, which I'll get into for this school year. And then we continue to offer Voyagers, which is a place for students to try new things. It's sponsored by the PRS PTO. But it's a lot of teachers and other volunteers volunteering their time to do things that kids may not normally get to do at the elementary level. I'm teaching a cross-country course right now. So I'm just running with seven to eight kids from three, from third grade to fifth grade. It's a great way to get to know the kids on a, on a, on a deeper level. Restorative justice practices was to increase the depths of understanding and use of restorative justice practices. This will contain training and facilitation of the restorative justice practice learned throughout the school year. So again, we had high ambitions. And administration was trained at the beginning of 2021. School adjustment counselors and guidance counselors were trained this year. COVID kind of got in the way of the full implementation of, of all of this. So this, this was sort of canceled. But we did use the things that we learned that when incidences came up, we were able to do some circles with some of the students and some of the kids and use those practices for those of us that were trained to get them involved and get them, get the students working instead of being punitive. And how can we work together as a community to really build that, 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 that bond between what you did and how it made others feel? And how can then we reassess that situation instead of doing something punitive to it? So that was the restorative justice. And then equity, to build a community where everyone feels like they belong, no matter race, gender, ethnicity, sexual preference, et cetera. This includes staff, students, families, and anyone who has a relationship to PRS. Again, this is in progress. And you'll see that this is folded into one of our goals. So we cut it down to four goals for moving forward. So we created an equity team, which created a wordle of words that come to mind for belonging, inclusion, and equity. From there, the equity team created a Google form that went out to staff. And they asked staff, what does belonging, inclusion, and equity mean to you? And we shared out our wordle that we had done from our team. We brainstormed some ideas on how the staff is going to tackle, tackle this issue to make sure that everyone in the community or anyone who has a relationship with Plymouth River River feels that they do belong and can come in at any moment and, and feel like they belong. And then the team worked together to create a lesson that they differentiated amongst the grade levels for staff to teach about belonging in morning meeting. So that is sort of what partake or, or took while we were triaging through COVID. So it was just like, woo, we did all that and we swab noses. So then now we look sort of many. So as we now look forward to the future for 2022, 23, and then 23, 24, we've tweaked a little bit of our, our, our plans and so we have four goals. I'm sorry. So our theme is magical things are happening at PRS. So we want to sort of bring the magic back to the classroom. We want to bring the magic back, back everywhere. You know, we had some dark, dull days and we want to bring the happiness and magic back to PRS. But I do want to say thank you to everyone who helped make the Windows Project a reality. For those that haven't seen what it looks like, this is what the Windows used to look like before. This was my summer. And this is what they look like now. So they are fantastic. The windows are almost all in place where there are some missing windows. There are Plexiglas in there, but we were being told those, those pieces of Plexiglas will be, be, being replaced as soon as they get cut to the right size and be put in. And then we look at the school improvement goals. We're going to focus on academics. I'm going to go through this more, so I'm just going to go quickly through this academics. Social emotional, again, connections. And this didn't update for me, but this actually should say UDL and not connections. So what I did with all the goals is I did try to align them with the strategic plan and what spoke that they belong to so that you'll see each plan is aligned with the strategic plan and the objective. So this one in academics, implement the new schedule built across the four elementary schools while configuring the MTSS schedule to help build upon and improve the skills of all of our students. So we have the support of the teaching staff, did an instructional shift of timelines of the schedule to implement MTSS in order to meet the needs of all of our students even better than we were doing last year. To create time for data meetings and discussion on student achievement in order to flexibly group our students in tier two. So what I mean by flexibly grouping is if we take a look at, say, grade four, we have all of our students in grade four, they've, they've been dibbled, they've had iReady, they've had common assessments. And what we do is we take all that data and we look at the data and we say, where is our, where are our tier two kids? Where are our kids that need a little extra room for push? And we need, we want to put them in a small group. So we put them in a small group and we work with our, our interventionists, we work with our specialists, we have those small groups. And then we sort of look at where the teachers are and who are in the teachers' classrooms and we say, okay, this group of kids, I'm going to pull a little bit from Ms. Wilson's room, I'm going to pull a little bit from Ms. Kramer's room, and I'm going to pull a little bit from Ms. Talbot's room, and we're going to make this group and they really need to work and focus on this. And then we take another group and we put them in another classroom. And in some of the classrooms, we also have, we need to extend for the students. So it's not only looking at the students who are sort of struggling or, or need some, some COVID rebuild, but we're also looking at where are the students that need to be pushed a little bit harder? So as we flexibly group and look at the MTSS model, we look at the, I don't want to say bottom, but that those who are struggling the most and those who are achieving the most and how are we going to make sure that we are giving all of our students an opportunity to grow? We've utilized our interventionist and support staff to appropriately create these flexible groupings and we provided opportunities for staff to meet and relook at the data, move around the groupings as needed to provide the right support for these students to help the students who are growing and to close the gaps that some of our students have.
Is that mostly happening in classroom time or is that in the half hour of, half hour of ELA, half hour of math?
So the, the tier two of the flexibly grouping is happening in the half hour of the reading and the half hour of math. So a little bit more about this. So I just, as I said, we, we used our literacy, reading, and math specialists during this MTSS process. Some of our teams use a push-in model where they're pushing into the classroom, some are pulling out and some are doing a difference of the two. And then math plus happens with grades four and five to enhance math enrichment by diving deeper into math concepts and conceptual understanding. So we are pushing some of those students forward. Two, the social emotional, to improve and support the social emotional skills of all students to ensure growth within social emotional behavioral and academic domains. So we added a guidance counselor position across all four elementary schools and then we had to define their role. So we created a document amongst all four elementary principals. This is where we sort of say we've been attached at the hip. We really have been. So we created this memo that said, here's what the expectations of the guidance counselor is, here's the expectation of the school adjustment counselor, here's the expectation of the school psychologist. For a way for us as principals to really get an understanding of where they fall, but also for the teachers. If they need to go to a, to someone for academics, it's going to be more towards the guidance counselor. If they're going to need to go to someone for social emotional, they're going to go to the school adjustment counselor. If they're looking at going through the IST process, they're going to go to the, the school psychologist. So really giving teachers a, a strong fundamental understanding of what each role was. And we had to do that first as principals before we could roll that out. Develop a plan with the new guidance counselor to get to every K through five classroom and focus on the toolbox curriculum and the anti-bullying curriculum as a tier one intervention. So they have built into the schedule a, a period, a half hour period where they're going into every classroom and they're working on this curriculum. Tier two interventionists are also, tier two interventions are also delivered by the guidance counselor and the school adjustment counselor after the student risk screening scale. And then that's when we start reaching out to families. We say, hey, your, your child has, has rated high on what, whether it could be anxiety or other issues and we want to start working with them in tier two to make sure that we can support those students. And then again, we have the family child study team that meets, again, that's me, myself, the nurse, the school psychologist, now the guidance counselor and the adjustment counselor to really look at, are there any students falling through the cracks? Are there any students that are having trouble with attendance? What, what do we need to do to help support those families? So we meet bi-weekly on that one. And then goal three was communication. How are we going to keep, continue to build and grow a healthy, equitable, and inclusive community that strengthens the school culture to allow for social, emotional, physical, and academic wellness for all students, staff, and anyone with a connection to the PRS community? So this is where we sort of folded in last year's gold five into this one and then it folds into the next goal as well. So we are increasing our social media presence, trying to tweet out as much as possible. Again, we created an Instagram account to also do that because we are finding that now more of our parents are of the millennial age that are using Instagram than are using Twitter. So we have to sort of get with the, get with the times. I continue the week ahead, but again, you know, putting in the days of the cycle, special events, important information. We continue to use the smore. We're exploring ideas for parent forums other than monthly PTO meetings. So one of those things that we're thinking about is we brought iReady into school. We would like to sort of think about working with our, our specialists to do an, an evening of talking about what is iReady? What is it all about? What are we using it for? Just to build knowledge and capacity for our parents as well as them understanding when the students come home and says like, I was on my path or this is what I did for iReady. Or they're getting an iReady report, they understand what that really means. We want to increase our partnerships with local media sources and the use of technology, social media to highlight some activities. So whether we're, we're making monthly slideshows of all the pictures that we've taken and then sending them off or, or reaching out to Harvard Media more, which was, which is now something that after my interim and now becoming principal, I realized that we have that at our sort of disposal and just reaching out to them more. We brought back staff book clubs. One of the things that I did miss is, forgot to mention is we also implemented PRS pals. We wanted to not also, we didn't, wanted to not forget about our staff. And so one of the things that I brought up was PRS pals and the staff. We have 44 staff members out of our 82 taking part of it and it's really a secret buddy once a month. And so you fill out a list of all the things that make you happy and then somehow they get a gift once a month. You spend somewhere around 10, $10 to $20. You may go a little bit lower one month, a little bit higher the next, but it's, they get a gift in their hands. Sometimes it's someone's delivering coffee to them that a student, that they, that, sorry, that a, I may have given to a, to our admin assistant who has given to the nurse, who has given it to the teacher. And all of a sudden this shows up on their desk or this shows up in their hands. And when you see this, when you see the smile on their face, you know you did something right with implementing this. So I've only gotten positive feedback and you can see me talking about it and the teacher's smiling like it's, it's just something that I find to just brighten the day of someone when sometimes you don't know that they need their day brightened. We want to, we expanded new family events and combined them with the back-to-school open house. So new families that came into the district, we, we did welcome kindergarten, but at the barrel, the, the PTO sponsored an event for just the new families so they can get to know each other and say like, hey, this is sort of the stomping ground of where our kids at PRS sort of hang out at times. So this is, so you get to know the community a little bit more. We're going to grow the equity team. I sort of built our team a little bit differently. I said, let's, let's bring our staff together as one and let's get an understanding of what belonging, inclusion, and equity is first. And after we did that, let's start growing the onion instead of peeling it. So now this year, we want to start bringing in outside partner, partners and parents so we can start growing it. But I truly believe that we had to have a fundamental understanding of what those three words meant and what they meant in our building before we could bring anyone outside. Because if we don't have a solid base and a solid ground for what that meant, then we're not going to be able to move anywhere with that. And the last piece is begin a MEKO mentoring program in collaboration with Amy Jackson and using the model from South Elementary School. And Amy Jackson is going to come discuss with our equity team about how to get that going and how to get that started. And then lastly, it's universal design for learning is to increase the depth and of understanding and implementation of UDL practices that will help support students' ability to show what they have learned or how information, information is presented to them in various ways. As Katie Roberts mentioned at the beginning, we are part of, now I'm forgetting the name of the team, the instructional, the, the leadership team for UDL. So we had to identify a lead teacher who is going to help support and disseminate that information and then we also had to build a team. We are attending monthly leadership meetings, webinars, professional developments, book clubs is a PLC that goes along with it, and other various scheduled events for the Inclusive Academy that we are, we are part of. And East is the other elementary school that's part of this Inclusive Academy. My goal is as we're learning and going through this is to create staff meetings that are UDL designed to help staff see different ways in which they can incorporate this into their classroom. So it is, this year is really about learning and evolving from what UDL is. It's not, let's go and hurry up and throw and implement everything into the classroom. It's really taking in what they have to teach us. How do we learn from it? And then using our teacher lead and those that wanted to jump on the bandwagon, bandwagon on the first of three years, how can they help support others? And then how are we going to develop a plan in spring of 23 to disseminate the key learnings of our strategies and how are we going to get others to sort of jump on that bandwagon to grow our UDL, our UDL team? You can stay up to date with PRS happenings. Our, our school council notes are linked on, on the website. Again, we use Facebook, we use Twitter, and we, we use Instagram. And we always remind people to be, please remember to be polite, responsible, and safe.
Excellent. Thank you. Well done. Thank you very much. And thank you for your leadership over the last two years and to Melissa for all that you did when you were principal as well and as assistant principal that you're continuing to do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Questions, comments? Jim?
And the, going over last year's goals, you talked about how using elements of restorative justice, but it was never really fully incorporated into the school culture. What do you think it would take to make that happen? And that's sort of...
Time.
Or is that a goal we're kind of not really following?
It's a goal that I would love to follow, but right now, the, the essence of time in order to get staff trained in it and in order to really bring it on, there's just not enough time in the day right now.
I think it's time also for training of staff. I think that we made some choices at the elementary level to focus this year on math, next year focusing on reading. It's not having enough time for professional development.
Okay. And my other question is the MEKO mentoring program seems really awesome and interesting. Is that, are you sort of looking at that as a pilot that could happen at other schools as well?
So we're looking at it, it happens at South already and South has been running it. And so Mary, Amy Jackson has met with Mary and her team and she has reached out to us and said like, we'd like to get this going at the other elementary schools. So it's something that seems to, that will roll out amongst all of our elementary schools.
Awesome.
I find my dad too, at the secondary as well. So Amy met with the high school equity team today. And so it'll be rolling out across all six schools.
Awesome.
Okay.
Anybody else? Carrie, anything from you?
No, just great job. And I really appreciated how everything aligned with the strategic plan. I think that's, that's really great. I don't see any hands online.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think this is really great. I think to Mary's ice cream analogy, it is great. Like, that's one thing I love about our elementaries. They are, the core values are all the same and the mission is the same and the theory of action is the same, but just the little differences that are put into it just really make a community. And I think it makes our secondary level that much richer for the kids having come with different experiences, but a shared set of goals and values. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll see no questions? All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 Plymouth River Elementary School Improvement Plan.
I will second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Congratulations. All approved. All right. Moving on to 7.5 to discuss the...
I actually asked a good question.
Oh, sure.
That's unrelated. I was inspired by that, but it's more general.
All right.
I'm actually pretty serious about this. Has the school identified some communications contingency plans? Because I know Twitter's been going through some issues right now. And I just wanted to know if the district has any plans of other platforms to increase the communications. Because I know a lot of district officials, whether that's Principal Swanson or Central Office, use a lot of Twitter.
I've heard from many verified sources on Twitter. Everything's fine.
I think the positive is that we've been using LinkedIn, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter primarily. And you'd be amazed, there's a lot of Hingham Community and Schools, PTOs that are actively using Instagram. So it seems like Instagram is going to be sort of where we're kind of headed quickly.
Yes.
But good question. Good question.
Yes. Thank you, Nathan.
We've been thinking about that.
All right. All right. So to discuss the 2022 MCAS data.
So I, I want to thank the team. I'm going to welcome them to come up to, to share on, on the MCAS data. This builds upon, we really, it's a different presentation than has been done in the last two years. And we really asked the team to really focus on next steps and some conclusions, a little bit, so we're going to present a little bit of data, some conclusions that we're making and some next steps. Knowing that the MCAS is one picture in time, it captures some information. It's already old data because it was last spring. So we really want to use the information as a sort of a summative of last year. It informs our curriculum, our instruction, and our practices moving forward. So we really asked the team to sort of share some information, data with you. We presented a lot of data in the packet that provides sort of a scope that the information was used at the teacher level to look at individual students. And it's also being looked, big picture, to inform the district's practices moving forward. So I'll invite the team to come up and I think Katie can probably stay there.
Yeah.
So I think he has the clicker then.
Dave has the clicker.
Dave, do you want to give Katie the clicker first and we'll switch off?
Sure. She'll join you.
Thank you. Well, I can't, cannot promise you a song and dance like Mary, but it will be a riveting data presentation and very thorough this evening.
Can we spell the song later?
Absolutely. Yes. And I do hope that you are gathering that we are all singing the same song and that many of the themes that are in my presentation and our presentation are very similar to some of the themes and strategies and initiatives that both Mary and Greg shared this evening. So tonight's presentation, as Dr. Adams said, is more of a high-level overview focused on student achievement. And it's centered on our goal of having all students, including our subgroups, meet or exceed proficiency. So this evening, we'll be answering basically three essential questions. The first essential question is one that we ask every year. And that is how did HPS students, including subgroups, perform on MCAS in the spring of 2022? In addition to analyzing the current levels of achievement, this year, of course, we are also interested in the essential question of our progress compared to pre-pandemic achievement levels. Our third question, and again, what is hopefully of most interest to this audience this evening, is what are our next steps to support the acceleration of student learning? And as Dr. Adams mentioned, in the school committee packet, so we are presenting really just achievement level data this evening, but in your packet, there's a much deeper dive into standards analysis and curriculum analysis that will give you kind of a look under the hood of the work that we actually do in our departments. So the data in the much lengthier packet is the data that really informs our curriculum initiatives, informs our instructional practices, and again, compelling and riveting reading. So also again, to echo what Dr. Adams just said, just to provide context that MCAS is one of several dead data points that are used by our curriculum team. And in some ways, not the most important or timely because that data is now old. So I actually think you'll find more interesting our presentation in December around the more current data that the new iReady initiative is yielding for us. That's really the data that's working to inform our plan moving forward. So with that said, back to Mary's, back to the future theme. Though MCAS is not the most riveting topic, it does represent kind of a, a return to normal, if you will. to normal, if you will. So just a reminder that 2022 is the first year since 2019 that we had full test administration. So 2020 testing was completely paused, so represents a break in the data. 2021, grades three through eight were assessed with a half test, and not even the same half of the test. So half of our students took one half of the test, the other took the other half of the test, which made that data analysis a bit, a bit tricky. Grade 10 did have a full test administration due to the graduation requirements related to that. But again, 2022 is our return to full test administration, and in future presentations, will be our new baseline for analysis moving forward. So we did want to, this evening, any of you who have read the news or the Boston Globe and so on, probably have a sense of some of our statewide trends. And so putting tonight's data in context, statewide, there were some signs of learning loss recovery, but progress was uneven across grade levels, subject areas, and subgroups. Statewide, on average, the data yielded the following, that is, that math scores did increase across the state. ELA scores across the state declined, although we'll speak to our own ELA scores here that held steady, and a couple of cases increased. And across the state, science scores increased modestly. Statewide, we were seeing some ELA results that indicated the impact of lower writing scores. Again, we were mitigated here in Hingham with those writing scores. Mary Andrews will speak to that. And as you would expect, there were some early literacy challenges across the state. And on our call, call with the commissioner, with Dr. Adams, he really stressed that student absenteeism remains a challenge across the state. There are still students home for extended absences and so on. And so that certainly has posed some challenges for recovery across the state. So some key takeaways of our own data. So Hingham Schools' data points definitely point to some areas for targeted focuses, but the pandemic losses were mitigated overall relative to our, our peers. A celebration, if you will, is that our exit comes and outcomes in grade 10 were strong for HPS students across content areas. And similar to what we saw in the state data, there were some grade levels and cohorts that were impacted more than others, and we'll be hearing about that in our presentation from our directors this evening. Hingham will continue to focus attention to approving achievement outcomes for our, our subgroups, including our students with disabilities and our students with high needs, which includes our students who are English language learners, our students who are, have low income status, and also ties in that population of students with disabilities. As I mentioned previously, we are looking at our MCAS data in tandem with our iReady data to really inform curriculum and instruction. And the two data sets together are really more complete than either one individually. And in, in the spirit of, yes, Nathan?
Disabilities includes both 504 and IEP?
That's an excellent, excellent question. So students with disabilities only includes...
I don't believe so.
Only includes students on IEPs. So, yes, yeah, thanks, Nathan, for that clarification. Great. And so again, you've heard, we had kind of a stealing our thunder this evening. Many of these district initiatives that are related to our, our, our team's willingness to bring our, our students forward and accelerate learning have already been mentioned this evening. So again, all of the parts do come together into a single cake or ice cream sundae, or whatever Mary's analogy was. But it basically all falls under the umbrella of our tiered systems of support. So whether it's the universally designed math instruction professional development, the use of our iReady diagnostic data, the MyPath individualized learning platform, the reading program pilot, math program pilots, Open Saiad program implementation, all of the leadership academies, it all ties together under this tiered system of support. And all of these are part of our next steps to drive learning forward. So with that...
And you had the Empower Writing Program in your PD packet.
Yes, so, yeah, so Empowering Writers is, is a program that we've had for many years, and we're just continuing to advance that. And Mrs. Andrews can speak, speak more to that. So with that said, each of the content directors this evening will present their data. And again, we're grateful for all of the work that they put in into preparing this presentation this evening. So first on deck is our math director, David Jewett.
Thank you.
Katie?
Can I just ask a quick question, Michelle?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just in terms of how you, do you want us to ask, if we have questions, would you prefer we ask questions like while the presentation's going on, at the end of each section, or wait till the...
Unless it will interrupt your...
Maybe if we do it at the end of each section, that'd be fine.
End of each section, sure, okay.
Sorry. Oh, no. I'm a bluder. It wasn't.
So to just sort of echo what Katie and Dr. Adams said, we'll be really looking at the high level of the data. We, we know you have the data, so we're not going to sit there and go through every single number and every single thing on every single slide. So it feels like we're moving pretty quickly. We're going to try and move through the numbers quickly, and again, talk about the next steps and focus on that. So we start off looking at our students, their general trends in grades three through eight. I think we started on the right.
Please speak at the podium.
Oh, my apologies.
You need the microphone.
So we started at the right, and we, we're looking at the line graph, and we can sort of see our trends generally followed for three through eight, the state, from 2019 to 2022. We didn't quite dip as low in 2021, and then sort of showed the same growth coming back out of there. This is, of course, our meeting and exceeding data, which is our goal for all students. But I think what's important, and is not really encapsulated in that line graph, is we shift over to the left side and look at the bar graph, where we stack up against the state in terms of students not meeting expectations. We are far ahead of the state in that category as well. And so I kind of wanted to point that part of it out as well. When we shift over to our 10th grade scores, as we can see over that three-year trend, the state is falling from 2019 and continued to fall after 2021. We have maintained consistent performance for students meeting exceeding expectations in the low 80% at the 10th grade scores. For all of our math students, and again, we're thinking about our goal of trying to move as many students to meeting exceeding as possible, looking at that category sort of on the far left, we average 30 points above the state when we look at grades three through 10. But clearly, if we look at grade seven and eight, that's where we start to see a shift in our numbers. We know traditionally that there's always a shift, sort of a tick downwards, four to five points across the state in seventh, and again, traditionally, four to five points down, again, in eighth grade, that's traditional. But if we look at our numbers, I think we're seeing a little bit more than that, and that's something that we're looking at, and I'll sort of address that a little bit as we move further on through the presentation. If we're looking at our students with disabilities, again, we're seeing those same general trends in seventh and eighth grade. On average, we're 20 points ahead of the state from grades three through grades 10, but again, ticking down in grades seven and eight, more than we'd like. But in particular, the number that really jumps out to me on this is if we go to grade eight and move all the way across to the not meeting expectations mark, that 33% is obviously a number we'd never be happy with and not satisfied with. To add some context to that number, for the state, the average is 48%. For grade eight students with students with disabilities not meeting expectations, so we're still 15% ahead of the state. To take it sort of back to our own context, although not compare ourselves to the state, but compare ourselves back to ourselves, in 2019, that number was 13%. For grade eight, and actually for grade seven, it was 0%. So again, kind of thinking about where we were beforehand, and obviously, something to look at moving forward. When we look at our students in high needs, again, it's the same general trend we're seeing in seventh and eighth grade, a little bit of that tick down. Again, I think 18% on average above the state, and ticking down again in seventh and eighth grade. So again, those slides sort of focused on meeting exceeding expectations, which is going to be our goal for all of our students. But as we come into this next set of slides, we're sort of looking at where we were sort of pre-pandemic, and how we're coming out of this post-pandemic. And so for all of our students, we can see that obviously, in 2021, we had a huge tick downwards, and then coming back out in 2022, we've started to show some progress back towards where we were in 2019. But Katie talked about sort of resetting our norms a little bit, and sort of saying, well, this is where we're at, and we're now starting here and moving forward. We feel very much like our 22 results now are sort of where we are, and how we need to sort of start and move forward. We obviously want to get back to our 2019 numbers, but we also want to get further ahead of our 2019 numbers as well. That's always the goal. I think the highlight in this, again, is to really see, we've moved forward a lot coming back out of our scores from 2021 into 2022. As I move through the students with disability slide and the students with high need slides, again, we see the same general trend that, you know, dip, dipping down in 2021, and then moving back up in 2022. These cohorts are so much smaller that one or two students makes a big difference. And so, again, in some of those grade levels, you'd say, oh, my gosh, we're doing fourth grade, we're doing so much better than we did in 2019. But again, is that a difference of one or two students that has that big impact? Again, I'm not trying to shoot down successes, but, you know, keeping it all sort of, it's all generally relative for moving forward. And so we see that with our students with disabilities, and we see the same general thing, again, students with high needs.
Is there any, for this sort of a general question about the MCAS data, is there any information about the retest data? Because I'm looking at 10th grade when it becomes high stakes. I'm consistently told that we don't have a problem with kids not getting a diploma because they can't pass the MCAS. So somewhere in between 10th and 12th grade, that's 60% or whatever of kids with disabilities are passing the MCAS?
We only had two students who did not pass last year.
Okay.
And they're part of a cohort that will be taking the test starting tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
So, but yes, to that point, 20 years, we haven't had a student not graduate because they haven't passed the MCAS.
Okay.
So we've always found a way to get them.
Yeah, it's somebody, I'm just squaring that with the more than half of them that don't pass it on the first time in 10th grade.
I'm not sure that's where we're...
Or did I miss, unless I misread that?
Remember, the benchmark for competency is different than proficiency, although that's partly the state, remember, recently raised that expectation for graduation, and that's coming shortly, in the coming years, with the expectations higher in order to get that competency determination.
So are you specifically looking at sort of grade 10, that 10% not meeting expectations potentially?
Right, added to the partially meeting expectations, but I think Dr. Adams just corrected me on that. So that's...
And even the, yeah, okay. I think if you have a further question, I can clarify it in a little bit, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Continue on.
It was too, it was too...
Sorry.
No, that's quite right. It's a very important question. I mean, that's what matters most, right? Making sure that they can pass that test and graduate when it actually becomes an impediment. So I'm glad you asked. So we, just some general conclusions, approximately three-fourths of our students are meeting exceeding across all grade levels. That's something really to be celebrated. That's fantastic. Obviously, our seventh grade, eighth grade scores were better than the state, but not to the same degree as those two tests that sort of bookend it in grade six and grade 10. This is holding true for students with disabilities. It's also holding true for our high needs populations as well. I'll discuss that a little bit more in the next steps for secondary. We made some very specific curriculum decisions about the geometry standards in middle school that drastically affected our grade eight testing. In particular, those, there were standards that are taught again in seventh, sorry, taught again in the high school geometry class, and we focused on algebraic thinking and operations as really the enduring standards that kids need year in and year out to continue to push the curriculum forward. Geometry standards, you know, you can, you can get away without, without them for a little while, especially the ones that we sort of focused on and were thinking about when we're having to focus on getting students sort of back into recovery and slowing down the first half of the year, and really making sure that we're addressing all their needs. Our school years started much slower than they had recently. And so those geometry standards, we knew, we've always taught them, again, in our high school geometry class, we knew that the students, when they get back to the high school and we're in geometry, would see those standards in depth. We also need to keep in mind, this is a relatively new and evolving MCAS test. It was a surprise to us that there were this many specific questions about the standards that we said, oh, it'll be okay. And I told, and I'll take full ownership of that. I remember telling it to teachers, like, don't worry about it, there'll be a couple of questions on it, and I'll own it. And it turned out to be seven, you know, and that's a lot. Seven's a lot of questions. So I think, you know, it had a big impact on our grade eight scores, for sure. But something we'll address and move forward, and it's again, part of the pandemic a little bit, that, I'll say it is what it is, but it kind of was. We also noted that our grade three scores are sort of lower than our typical performance, but they were in keeping with the state trends for grade three. But one of the things to kind of contextualize that, we were still, we're not back to where we were with our meeting exceeding category, but we were 24 points above the state average for the last two years, and that's the highest we've been above the state average for the last 15 years. So again, there's, you know, the data can be misleading, you really got to kind of dig into it a little bit sometimes. And then I know the packet that Katie just referenced has 280 slides of analysis on there, somewhere around the end of the math slides, I think slide 170, 177. There are some line graphs that actually, I went through and created graphs, looking at our most vulnerable populations, our high needs population, our students with disabilities, and created that similar chart to what I started off with, the graph of sort of our trend against the state, which we saw for the three through eight and for the high school. But I did it specifically for every grade level, for those two cohorts. And there's some really positive news in there. You, you see that we dipped, and then we accelerated and grew and outperformed the state at every single grade level in both of those subcategories. And I think that has a lot to do with what we invested into getting our kids the support at the time they needed it, and really that structure that we keep hearing everybody talk about in terms of MTSS and everything that we've put into supporting our students. I think if you're looking for some data that proves some impact, I think it's really, you'd see it there. So I think it's slide 170, but I'm not entirely sure. I'm sure you didn't have time to read them all. So anyway, our next steps. Like we do with everything, we're reviewing specific questions with staff to address areas and needs. We'll do that in our data team meetings at each school. We're providing support to all learners through the tiered instruction and interventions that are much more cohesive, going back to them, having that master schedule, and being able to much more equitably apply interventions to students across all the grades, and not just saying, oh, well, you know, we were able to get to these students where we have a much better sort of structure for getting to all students equitably, which is going to help us a lot moving forward. We have a renewed focus on the math workshop model for elementary math instruction, and that is coming back to sort of, someone asked a question earlier about sort of, is that intervention happening during the TMI block? It might have been yours, Tim. Or is it happening during the, the sort of the classroom block? And we're trying to actually blend them into both, and give opportunities so that students are getting everything they need multiple times throughout their day. And so our work, we're doing year-long professional development around, around the math workshop model. We're using the iReady diagnostic assessments. Again, we'll come back and talk a lot more about that in December, but we're using that data to help with the intervention model. We're using the MyPath digital learning tool. It's been helpful for intervention, grade level work, and for extending students' work as well for students who need that. And again, a lot of the year-long professional development that's being provided is also being provided on those topics. We've shifted the elementary math specialist roles back towards that math coaching model that we started in 2019. For some of you who were here in May, actually remember that, we were really excited about that at the time. Obviously, we had to shift and use that personnel differently, but that's really to support best practices for elementary math instruction, and to give classroom teachers the embedded support they need to work, again, on developing their math workshop model. And it's all about providing tier-one support that goes to every single student, and so that everyone's getting the best opportunity they can within their math block. And then we provided some professional development for the elementary math interventionists and the specialists in early numerical reasoning and fractional understanding, and those are topics that typically our interventionists would be working on anyway. So we were able to provide some extra support and learning for them. At secondary, again, we're reviewing, we'll review questions with every single sort of grade level and do that during our meetings. We're also providing professional development on the mathematical practices, which is, you know, part of, it's more the how we teach, not the what we teach. But in particular, we're focusing on perseverance and growth mindset this year. And that's part of a year-long professional development for the secondary staff. At middle school, we are implementing new grade eight curriculum. The Math Eight with Algebra course is in its second year of piloting a Desmos curriculum, and looking at our 2019 to our 2022 data for that, those groups. That specific class showed a ton of growth for that. All right, I don't know what I did, but showed a ton of growth for that cohort. So we're pleasantly pleased to see that. In seeing that, we've also then added the, the Math Eight courses also in its first year of piloting that Desmos curriculum, with a proposal to combine those two classes into one grade level, on-grade level class next year, much like we have in grade seven. We are providing specific targeted MCAS review of transformations for grade eight students taking Algebra I. That was the topic that I mentioned, was sort of one of the major geometry topic that had been shifted to 10th grade. However, our grade eight students taking Algebra I, they've accelerated, right? Per the state, they take seventh and eighth grade math in seventh grade. And so in doing so, they've learned that eighth grade standard the year before. Now, most of the other... Now, most of the other standards that they learn, they're using in Algebra, so they're fresh on those. But when it comes to something like the MCAS, if they haven't been using their transformation skills throughout the year, which they don't, and that's fine, in an Algebra class, but it will affect them on the MCAS. And as we saw, seven questions obviously added up. So we're going to make sure we have direct review of that throughout the year, cyclical review, to make sure that that's a fresh concept for the students. And we'll overlook at that data next year and make sure that that helped. And then we're piloting new curriculum materials in our Math 7 classes and then refining our approach to MTSS at HMS so that we can just try to get as much support to as many students as possible. And then at the high school, trying to continue on or rejuvenate some of the things that we've long been successful practices for us. The Algebra 1 support class after school, our MCAS support class for our current sophomores. And those are things that were, I don't want to say impossible, we couldn't run or we didn't run during the last couple of years. So really excited to actually have those back and give those supports to the kids who need them. And then providing individual tutoring for students who do not initially pass the grade 10 MCAS to help get them to that makeup test. And then we have so many students that sort of come to us in 9th grade with very varied backgrounds, whether they're coming back from private schools, students who move in 9th grade. We use Alex in Algebra 1, which is similar to iReady in many ways in terms of, it's an opportunity to provide individualized instructional opportunities for students and try and get everyone sort of back on that same page, moving forward in the same direction. So with that, I guess I'll be taking math questions.
Sorry, I'm very used to looking at MCAS data, looking at, you know, where the problems are and where our interventions need to happen. I'm just curious, does, does the MCAS scores give you information about what to do with our highest functioning students and what sort of interventions we can use to?
I think this is a place where the iReady data is better because it really does pinpoint at the standard level. One of the things with MCAS is you get some information on the standard, but you don't see the question or further detail. So it does give us some information, but I think the most current iReady data is better.
Okay.
Perfect. Changing to my question, can you just give more high-level explanation of how you're using or a summary of the iReady, MyPath? I know we're going to have a full presentation, but especially for people watching, how are you using that both in contrast to, but also together with the MCAS data?
So the MCAS data in general can do a couple of things, you know, obviously we can drill down into individual students and see how they're doing and look at our subgroups and try to understand where we may need to provide more supports or different types of teaching for certain topics. And then the other sort of side of that, looking at MCAS, you may see things over time that you go, huh, why do we get Pythagorean question, Pythagorean theorem? We're, we're teaching the heck out of that in 8th grade, what's going on? And I know that, that one comes to mind because that's something year in, year out, you know, my 8th grade teacher's like, oh my God, I taught Pythagorean theorem in a plane, I taught it, you know, this way, that way, that way. And then they asked me, like, using a traditional proof model with squares, you know, and it's, it's, so there is also sort of that curriculum piece when we look at MCAS in a whole of, are we missing questions and we're not teaching something appropriately? Are we honed in on the standard? So that's sort of bigger picture for that. So then when we kind of take the iReady data, which is much more focused on individual students, the iReady data sort of on a whole gives us a picture of specifically what students' learning gaps may be. And I think because it's, the assessment itself is adaptive, so if a student, you know, they may get a question right, it pushes them to a harder question, and then maybe another harder question, it moves them back towards a similar question that they had before. And if they get that question right a couple of times, you know, it may ask them two or three times whether they're getting that question correct. Whereas again, an MCAS test, you may get a question once and you might get it wrong, but you might have just forgotten the negative sign or you made an arithmetic mistake, right? It's a little harder to pinpoint that. So the iReady data.
And one of the keys, I think, to sort of summarize, is also having teachers use the data so that teachers have been enduring the early releases and have had some data meetings in the school day to look at that data so that they can think about, how do I individualize instruction within that math workshop? So that's the assessment piece. And the MyPath piece is the adaptive lesson. So it actually plans a lesson dependent on your particular need based upon that assessment. And as well as teachers can play around with some of those assignments and lessons to say, ooh, I know you need more help on this, I'm going to reassign this particular lesson. So teachers are working to try to figure out, it has a wealth of information and a wealth of ways to individualize instruction that they're working through this new tool and using. And ELA has been using it in grades 3 to 5 already, so we have some familiarity with iReady. So using it now in math, I think is going to really help us further in pinpoint and individualize instruction.
No, that's excellent. It's, we've talked a lot about it throughout all the improvement plans, so I think it's nice to have that real time versus that historical snapshot.
A hundred percent, and I would say the teachers have been working their tails off at it. It's, it's a lot to learn and take in, and there's a lot of different things. And we said we're, we're no longer day zero, right, which is where we were at about a month ago. But it's very valuable too, I won't go into it more, keeping it succinct, Dr. Adams is always good.
Jen? No, Jen, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, and I had emailed you earlier today, and thank you so much for getting back to me so quickly. And you were able, you threw my answers into your presentation here tonight, so I appreciate that. And I just wanted to mention, I had, my question was regarding that 8th grade class and the, in the, it was the geometry questions. And unfortunately, unlucky we would call it, on the soccer field, you call it.
Unlucky and a little intentional.
There were seven out of, but my concern was with regards to that 8th grade class or, as an example, as they move on to high school, because we can remedy the problem for the next grade coming up, but then how is that path going to follow those kids as they go on with their math career and all the different levels of math that they're taking? And I just, I appreciate you explaining that, that that is something that the current, the 9th or 10th graders, teachers are aware of so that they know that these students haven't had that piece of curriculum as much as they would have in the past.
Correct, and I think I would just, I know I emailed you sort of an extensive answer, but I would add that, just sort of coming out of COVID, we took very detailed notes about the COVID shutdown, what got cut, what got taught remotely and we can't assume was learned. And then back into the hybrid year, what things we taught quicker than we normally would, et cetera. And so we've kept those documents, we started off the year, this year and last year. It's like, okay, you need to go back and look at your students and what they may or may not have learned last year. For many of those students, it was, we need to go back two years, right? Because a lot of times, of course, we'll jump a couple of years. And so we had some really good documentation of that. I really appreciate the extra work that all the staff put into keeping that data organized and sort of easily accessible. And so, yeah, we've had pretty good tracking, I mean, it's a trickle-down effect, but yeah, we're trying to do everything we can to just keep addressing those needs. And math's mostly cyclical anyway, so you don't usually see something for just once, right? You usually see it two, three years in a row, if not for the next eight or 10 years, so, yeah.
Thank you, Matt?
Thank you for the presentation. My, my questions on how I, how we should think about the findings from this as being MCAS-specific, which I get is what this report is versus more broadly. So if I, if I looked at this data for math, I, you know, I would say, wow, 10th grade or maybe the broader high school, there's much less learning loss than I would have expected or than, than I thought. And maybe that's just a 10th grade MCAS thing and it's actually worse than that, or, you know, maybe that's true. I would say, okay, at the elementary and middle school level, you know, not surprising, but there's a good amount of learning loss from an MCAS, or, you know, that shows up in these stats, and maybe that's more pervasive. And, you know, for special education students and high needs, you know, kind of putting aside learning loss, like, we don't do very well on this in general, and it got impacted. So I guess my question is, how do you think about this specific data versus more broadly? Are those fair observations?
I think they're all fair observations.
I would just say, Dave too, I would just want to say that we've talked a lot about this. I think one of the things, if you go back a couple of slides to the, like, high needs, the green, blue, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, that one. I think when you look at partially meeting, you can really see, there's, those are some large numbers. That's a positive because they're halfway there, right? And when you really dig down into the data, which folks are doing, you can see, hey, these are particular standards that group struggled with. These are particular types of questions these, this group struggled in. So we could really address our instruction and the curriculum to sort of address those needs. And you'll hear that in the discussion around, like, thinking about the 7th and 8th grade curriculum, thinking about the math workshop, how can we differentiate and really individualize and say, hey, you're struggling with this and we can devise our instruction and get immediate feedback back about your progress. And so that mix, and you've heard that, you heard that with the school improvement plans, right? Using data, thinking about our instruction and what the curriculum is, when we get those three right, we're going to see improvement. And those numbers, I know those are large numbers, but it means that we're, it's a positive in the sense, we're halfway there. We got to get these kids moving forward, and when we get those three things in place together, we're going to be able to do that for the majority of kids. Like Dave said really well, our goal is to get all kids to meeting expectations, that's a high standard. You've met the standard. So we've talked a lot about that and we're moving in the right direction by, and also linking our professional development for teachers.
And it's, to broadly answer your question, you know, I, I think that, you know, it's all data and context. I started looking at, you know, I first jumped into the grade 8, and I'm like, oh my God, what happened? I actually thought this was going to be a new year, we piloted this curriculum in Desmos, what's going on? And then I get in, I see all those questions we missed. And then I see our partially meetings category and I go, what the heck? And I start looking at that, and I'm like, oh my God, 30 kids missed by one question. And we had seven questions that were, you know, so like, all of a sudden, is that a big shift? And I don't, you know, I don't start, it's a lot to really drill down to be like, how many of those kids are from this special ed subgroup? Because that's not how they group the data when you get it. But, you know, so that, in general, I do think that, you know, there's a couple of things to be thinking about. Yes, our grade 2 kids, I think, did continue to do very well, and I'm very pleased with that, and they have over time. I think our older students in general also were able to respond better to remote learning, things like that, right? And so we're seeing now even, you know, spots where we go, oh, we thought everything was fine. Oh wait, no, 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 actually, these kids do need a little bit more help here in 3rd, 4th, 5th grade. The 3rd grade test is, you know, testing really knowledge for three or four years there. And so, you know, when we start thinking about focusing on this high needs group and our special ed group, we started that MTSS work before COVID, right? Because we needed to work on that. And I think, again, when I talk about the reference, those charts that aren't here, we can see the impact of that work in terms of the growth of those students coming out of the pandemic. But that work is really, and coupled with the work that all these teachers are doing in terms of sort of thinking about math workshop and trying to do more intervention with the classroom teachers, that work together, those are cumulative years of work that I think, you know, we're not going to fully see that to, you know, not going to see an explosion of scores, it's going to hopefully slowly build and grow over time as kids are going through that more and more. So I don't know if that.
Yep, no, that's all, thank you.
Carrie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, there were a couple of hands up on Zoom too after, but I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. And it's really just more of a comment, I was really happy to hear you say that the goal is to get every student meeting or exceeding expectations. And I think you've done a lot, and you, you and the staff have done a lot to, with the technology and the resources to get going. And I hear your point too about how it's something that's going to build over time, it's not something that's going to change in a year or two. So I guess the one thing is, when we're comparing ourselves against the state and saying, you know, we're, well, we're, you know, so many points over the state in a certain thing, but when it comes to high needs and students with disabilities, the state isn't great. And I think it just, it's, it's really important to look, I was looking at the students with disabilities and 29 to 37% of them pass or met or exceeded expectations, and then for high needs, 29 to 39%. So I guess I just want, want us to thank you, keep the expectations high, and I know, I know you are, and this is really encouraging. I love hearing the, the plan to go forward, but I guess that's the one thing, when it comes to those categories, the state doesn't do a great job, but I think, I think we can.
Yep, I couldn't, thank you, Carrie, and I couldn't agree with you more. And I think partially we're using the state because that's sort of the, our consistent data point that we tend to have year to year. And as Katie sort of talked, talked about to begin the presentation, sort of talking about those general state trends that we're seeing with the LA and math and science in general, it at least gives us a benchmark, but I agree with you that we're definitely looking to do better, for sure.
Great, thank you. So Michelle, Rebecca Nusseto has her hand up.
All right, hold on one second, and I will recognize Rebecca, just Matt had his hand up again.
Sorry, just to follow up on that, I don't even know who to ask this to, maybe it's Margaret, but coming to Carrie's point on us versus state, like, I feel, I imagine that our towns, community invest more in tutoring than some of other Massachusetts towns. And trying to understand, like, how much tutors are doing versus what's, you know, all the great work that's being done in the schools, like, how do we even think about that, I guess? How do we think about, do, do we have a good understanding or baseline? Again, I'm not really sure who I'm asking, of, you know, where, where tutors are supplementing? This is not really an MCAS question, just more broadly.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have that information. I mean, we could probably ask people and get a sense of, but I'm sure in a community like Hingham, many families are probably accessing lots of resources to support when their children might be struggling. I think that's why we want to make sure that we're strengthening and continuing to build the supports that exist within the school day. We have, that's what we control, right, is the school day. And the investments that have been made over the last two years to strengthen tiered systems of support are really important when it comes to our subgroups, you'll see that in ELA as well, that those are important. Our most vulnerable students, our students with disabilities and high needs, need those and benefit from those.
Time's up.
That means Matt stopped asking questions. The orchestra's playing you off.
Thank you.
And to that point, just about when we think about our high needs and we think about equitable access, just from being here a long time, parents often hire tutors when their kids are doing great, because they want them to get an A in an honors course as well. It's not just because students are struggling.
Yeah.
And so when we're really thinking about equity and doing what we can to support students who do not have that opportunity, we're the ones that can do something about that, right? And that's something that's really important. We have to build structures within the school that allow every student to have that opportunity. It doesn't mean, and I don't begrudge parents for doing that, right? It's their own choice, and you can do that, it's great, but I think, you know, we have to do what we can within the schools for that equity support as well. And I think that's really important to bring up.
Yep, Nathan, go on.
I was just curious about the merger of the Math 8 with Algebra and the Math 8 courses. I want to know a little bit more about the logic behind that decision and also if that is going to extend into the high school merger.
No, so I think it's, it's a really long circuitous route to kind of get us back to that. So I would say Math 8, merging Math 8 and Math 8 with Algebra is almost sort of the last thing that happened. Building that accelerated pathway that allows us to have, you know, well over 60% of students taking calculus as a senior is one of the things that makes our math program remarkable and unique, and we have so many strong students, as you well are aware of. So we don't want to eliminate that, that's, that's really important. That being said, as we built that structure out, it sort of was this idea of moving high school courses back into 8th grade and then sort of building the structure into 7th grade. And as you do that, you then have to sort of look at some of the other places that, classes that you have in place. And having the Math 8 and Math 8 with Algebra as two different groups actually was, it was sort of striding the group a little bit too much, to be honest with you. And there's, you know, potential opportunities, it's all about growth, right? We know that throughout middle school, students are growing at an entirely different rate. We do not want to close any doors, in fact, we're trying to open as many as possible. And we wanted to make sure that no doors are getting closed because a student may choose a certain course. You know, oh, I was in Math 8 and I was recommended for it, but, you know, over the course between 7th and 8th grade, I came back and I love math now and I'm invested in it. And so we wanted to make sure that we had as many opportunities for students to grow and be able to say, all right, you know what? I want to move up a level next year and I won't be impeded by the class that I took the year before. So it had a lot to do with that, Nate, and it's something that's sort of been growing over time. But to your initial question, it's not something that we intend to sort of. But to your initial question, it's not something that we intend to sort of eliminate that accelerated sequence. Great question.
All right, I'll take one more question from Rebecca Nenesisco. Do you still have your question? So can you give us your name and address?
Yeah, sorry. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
So this is-
Sorry Rebecca, can you just do your name and address?
There's so many terrific things being presented tonight.
Sorry Rebecca, can you just-
I was just going to see if it's possible going forward on another night if we can do a shared screen because out here we can't see any of the things we're talking about.
Oh, okay. That's interesting because I thought, I thought you could because we were seeing them on the screen in here.
No, we can't see a thing and it's really fascinating and we'd love to see more. So I know this is a new technology and we can hear you really well tonight.
Well, that's a hope. I can try and get on Zoom and share my screen.
Thank you, that's Jen.
Will we be sharing the meeting packet after?
Yeah, we'll, we'll share the meeting packet for those listening at home and not following along visually. But Jen is also going to see for the rest of the presentations if she can jump on the Zoom and share her screen. So that may, or Sherri, are you going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be able to fix that. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to ELA.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jewett, we appreciate that.
No, I'm good. Oh, it went away. Oh, it'll, okay.
Now we got, now we got our people.
The right button goes right?
Excellent.
There we go. Better? Thank you, Sherri.
Sure, am I still in control of the clicker?
Yes.
Okay.
That's thick, we can see it now.
Great, thank you. There you go.
So if we take a look at the land of ELA here, when we're zooming out really far, the state does some sort of Uber data on how three through eight does. And we can see sort of clearly in the bar graphs as we would expect to be outpacing the state, but to what extent? And that becomes more clear with that graph on the, graph on the left. On the right, we can see that from pre-pandemic 2019, right through 2022, we followed the state trajectory pretty closely. I will say that we were at 83% meeting and exceeding in 2019. This year, that overall score is 73%. For a little perspective, we are in good company. The top district in the state this year, we came in at 75%. And the next three were at 74 and then Hingham at 73%. So that just gives a little bit of perspective on, on where things are falling. I'm going to, Mary A. and Mary E. are going to have their faraway moments here, so. Sorry about that, okay. It is a little hard, yes. So we're looking, you know, obviously, just to reiterate, if we know that when we get to 10th grade, partially meeting is considered passing, but the, the goal is to move as many as we can in that direction to the, to the left, into that meeting and exceeding zone. If we look at the grade 10 data, we have, we, we followed the same trajectory a little bit, 2019 to 2021, there was a full test for grade 10 in 2021. Everybody else had half a test. But then you can see that where the state data fell, we held steady. 91% at the high school meeting exceeding in 2021 and 2022, up from 89 in 2019. So we did have some gains. I think it's also worth noting that we, that 90% on the district measure put us at number one in the state when you search by district. And if you search by high school, number three in the state. Just to know that when we go through these slides, the, as much as we can have school data, our six, seven, eight and 10 data is based on HMS or HHS. And then three to five, obviously, because of the different schools, that's district wide data that you'll be looking at. Same sort of setup as Dave's. If we look through here, one of our takeaways is that 75%ish of students from grade three to grade eight are meeting and exceeding. When we look at that all data and 91% of grade 10, then we have nine to 27% in that partially meeting zone and zero to five, depending on the grade level for not meeting when we look at all students. When we look at our students with disabilities, as we would expect, as Carrie mentioned, we're, you know, would be expecting to outpace the state in the way that we are. But we still have about 50%, a little over 50% on average of our students in partially meeting. And as Dr. Adams said, that's where we're drilling down into standards and item analyses with our departments and special educators to see how we can move that along even to get more people in that meeting zone. And certainly we're paying close attention to the not meeting expectation students and using our specialist interventionists and everybody else included at our data meetings in order to focus on those target areas of challenge. High needs, it's interesting, if you look at that wide swing of 32% to 63% in meeting and exceeding, it really speaks to a difference in composition and size of cohort. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. That becomes important when you move out of the all student zone. Let's see, we are, still have a good number in that partially meeting zone with the same goal of trying to drill down into standards and items in our department meetings and collaborative meetings and data meetings in order to see where the tricky parts are, tricky spots are and move students into meeting and hopefully exceeding even. If we look at this result, I will say, I think, well, I kind of know that the 2021 data, three through eight is probably especially least helpful in ELA when we talk about the two sessions that the students had and they were randomly assigned. So we had some students writing two essays and some writing one and some finishing two hours later than the people who were in the classroom next door. It was kind of a, bit of a bonkers experience. And then even though only one essay was graded for those students who had to write two, if it was the second essay that, you know, fatigue comes into play. So it really, we can look at it, you know, sort of just as a, even last year when they were, we were attending meetings about it, they were sort of like, even the big gestalt of things, you can look at it, but don't drill down. Those SGP's aren't really something they wanted us to pay close attention to last year either. So add that there for your viewing pleasure, but we'll say that more helpful to me is to look at those, we paired up the pre-pandemic, post-pandemic cohorts, which again becomes really important, I think, in students with disabilities and high needs because those numbers become much smaller and varied. So, you know, if I look across grade three, that's an important row and something I'll be paying more attention to when we finish our reading pilot and start adopting things in different classrooms because big curriculum changes do become important in that sort of horizontal view. But when thing, you know, when, when things curriculum wise are relatively the same, minus a pandemic or two, you're, looking at those cohorts is interesting, right? So we moved from 79 and then when they were sixth grader, 78%, right? 78, I don't have to walk you all the way through. And then we see some modest growths from the middle school to, to the high school. But that 80 to 74, that's our fifth graders who took it again last year as eighth graders. That 6% drop is something worth watching for sure. So we have an eye on those students, our current ninth graders. Students with disabilities, again, it could be deceiving one way or the other, as Dave sort of mentioned, in a good way or a bad way, if you just look across the way. Because those ends, those numbers associated with all the different cohorts represented on that screen run from 21 to like 68 or something, depending on the year and the grade. So that's why for us, it's more helpful to look at how the cohort performs. So I'm looking at that drop from 41 to 34 with third grade to sixth grade. So we'll be certainly watching them. And then we have 35 to 36. Interestingly, students with disabilities in that fifth to eighth grade cohort dropped 3%. It would be deceiving to look across the way in fifth grade, right? And see 29 to 35 as a big, a 6% growth. So it's, it's worth considering both. Again, we see those modest gains, or I guess 6% isn't modest then. And I can measure that eighth grade to 10th grade because they did take a full test in 2021 at grade 10. High needs, we're sort of seeing the same thing. Again, grade seven, they're the ones who just did the, this past year's MCAS. They were two, seventh graders in 2019. I would really hit the panic button if I just looked right across and said 62 to 43%. What is even happening if I look 62 to 63% at that cohort? That's not totally static, people come and go, but it's not as totally, you know, there could be an increase of 20 students and they're totally different students if you just look year to year, looking at the cohorts. Let's see, we had some strong exit outcomes across the high school in comparison to other districts. And as I mentioned, even though we saw some areas of regression, three to eight, overall, we, our losses were largely mitigated. The big news story, as Katie mentioned, is that the essay writing standard averages dropped 18, 18% in the state. Excuse me, we didn't see that. We had some, you know, single digit number, maybe five, 6% is in the full report, different grade levels and two grade levels actually saw gains in the writing standard. Some of the areas for growth that we're looking at, we definitely see a need for exposure to more exposure practice with informational text, something that was confirmed with our I-rated data last year that I can speak to a little bit. And then another thing that we thought was interesting and might come back to the tutoring question too, is that when we were looking at department meetings and meetings with the elementary reading specialists at item specific data and standard specific data, we saw more gaps against the state and sort of scores in, on some questions that were lower than what the state had attained for a score on particular items that we, there were more concerns in some of our high, high needs groups, which gets at sort of the bulk of difference there, comes in with our economic, you know, offset by what we already know about students with disabilities. And then they're again bundled in with high needs. So that's an interesting thing to think about and consider as we plan our instruction. So we just pulled out some of the bigger ideas we saw in elementary, those higher order things, identifying main idea, theme, evaluating the role of a specific passage in relation to a larger text. And then at middle, we had our usual suspects, drawing inferences, analyzing sentence structure and making comparisons across passages. And that, that idea of synthesis on any level is obviously one of, that will be more stymying for students. Our next steps, we have some things brewing in elementary. We're in the process of piloting a reading program or two and we'll be looking to adopt in fall 2023, we're optimizing our MTSS, shoring that up, something that we were fortunate enough to have in pretty good shape already in literacy because we were given those reading specialists. It's another, we have two at each school, that's been amazingly helpful. One of the other things when we're talking, skipping down about the writing and the common assignments and common practices, when you were asking about how we deliver that school to school to school, that addition of our elementary writing specialist has been so incredibly helpful and her, you know, pushing at different schools and different classes and modeling and attending PD and running PD so that everybody is working with the same writing lessons has been so, such a gap that we had and needed filled and she's done a great job. Monica Matthews, if you're listening. And then she's also been helping with our across the curriculum writing, making sure that our students are ready for narrative, expository opinion pieces, whatever is thrown their way. And then also when we talk about our reading team, elementary reading team and looking at how data works with each other, one of the things that we were seeing last year, we only use it in three to five at literacy, was some gaps in vocabulary and especially in comprehension of informational text. And that was supported by what we saw in the, in the reading passages on the MCAS. So they're being trained by the Keys to Literacy specialists for some push-in coaching in that area. So that's sort of like a direct response to some of the data points that we noticed. And then across the board, elementary, middle, high, really important that we're collaborating with special educators, reading specialists, interventionists to review data and plan strategies together because everybody's learning ELA in different places. Let's see, same thing, we're working on our MTSS program at the middle school. We also have those literacy specialists attending the Keys trainings. The collaboration piece, our writing specialist there has been great too, pushing into across different curriculums, social studies, science classes and English classes. At middle and high, we're continuing our work, we're almost done, on a vertical articulation of a grammar program that targets the language strand of the framework. It's not that we weren't doing it before, but it was sort of like, I'm doing semicolons too. And so we're trying to make that a more linear approach. And then to offset sort of the complex texts that we're making sure that we have students learn in classrooms under the direct instruction of their teachers, we're also implementing, we've done it in four grades and we're adding two more this year for the literature circles that help generate that genuine interest in an independent reading that will sort of be the other piece of the reading pie when we're looking at a range of text complexity. At the high school, recontinuing our dedication to the writing program. I mentioned the text complexity in the lit circles. And yeah, the other ones are also repeat things from the middle school that were, as far as our secondary grammar program, six through 12, and our collaboration with special educators and reading specialists. Science, I'm just kidding, questions.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Mary. I do want to say that these are really great outcomes and particularly as you note, sort of top in the state. And I want to just congratulate your team for that. I mean, I know we're coming out of a pandemic, but these were, these are good results. And I think what I really want to congratulate you all on and thank you for is still digging into this data and figuring out what are we missing? Where are we, where are the kids not, needs not being met and how we can get all of the students into the meeting expectation? So I appreciate that there wasn't just the victory lap.
Yeah. No, well, and the one thing about the victory lap, we know we'll be doing the loser lap next year because there's no place to go. So we need to get ready for that. So that's true.
But no, but that is, that is great work. Tim?
I was just going to ask about the IEP accommodations for, I'm looking at the special ed numbers and I'm also looking at the sort of the empower writing program, which is very heavy on graphic organizers. I'm wondering if kids are getting the right, the right accommodations, MCAS accommodations in their IEP meetings for which you're probably not at, that, I'm just wondering about that whole world, if that's something to think about.
So you're right in that I don't have a handle on what's happening on all of them. I do know in discussions with special educators, when we, and even with Monica, our elementary specialist, the, I don't know if you're familiar with the graphic organizer that they get for MCAS if they qualify, it's pretty basic.
Right.
And so that's tricky because you don't want to move away from like the, the really good organizers that we have depending on the different modes. But you also don't want a kid to be set up, be like, wait, what's this shape, right? I've never seen that before. So, so we've been trying to simplify, simplify, simplify. And even like the, the keys to literacy, the top down webs and the T charts that we're using for notes that are really adaptable to any situation, even and especially MCAS writing. But you bring up, you know, a good question in general, there's been a lot of work in the past two years, maybe, maybe three, right before COVID maybe, to make sure that the accommodations that they have in the classroom settings are matching what they have for MCAS. And it didn't always do that before. It's still a little bit tricky because the truth of the matter is many students qualify with really good reason for modifications to tests and writing assignments. And then they all take a test where the expectation is the same, right? So, so that's a challenge that we work on, right? Because the endurance piece can peter away quickly and, you know, trying to find some hacks depending on the kids in front of us as far as like what will qualify for solid MCAS writing.
And you're teaching, make, creating these graphic organizers yourselves as part of the writing process, but then you can't do that on the MCAS.
Exactly. So that's why we're really trying to, you know, practice with, especially right before the test, the T charts, the super simple type of MCAS graphic organizers, which are okay. And, but at least to get them through that exam. But it wouldn't ever become the default for what we know is good writing.
And there's a lot of work by the principals to match up students with their accommodations and making special groupings for MCAS to make sure all of those are met and special educators are using those accommodations throughout the year with students. So there's a lot of work that's done by principals to make sure those accommodations are done when it comes to administration of the MCAS.
Thank you.
Hallie?
First, I just want to say thank you because I tried to scroll through all 215 pages and you guys did so much data crunching. So thank you for all your work on that. And this is kind of a joint math and ELA question, a little bit about- A little bit about the data we're not seeing, one of the things that jumps out to me is the sixth graders in twenty nineteen, that was the last year they really took the test. They didn't take it in twenty twenty, then it was the half test, and then they had the ninth grade, just science. So how are we using this to find trends within that grade specifically?
You know, I'll I'll just speak to English and you can call me a liar next year, but um uh, I I have high hopes for that group. If anyone were going to be lost in that shuffle, if we look at that ninety percent in sixth grade of two thousand nineteen, um, I, that's not to promise you, a lot has happened, but I'm just saying um uh, there, as Dave mentioned, when you're talking about catching up on what we missed and all departments have had conversations about what was prioritized during COVID, and ours was definitely the writing program, and um when you're having hybrid learning and the um block schedule, which impacted the amount of time. Um, but it it is interesting because um e- even though, you know, that that's not a a promise here and tonight, I won't lie when I say I skim through and I think, okay, if somebody's going to be able to take a few years off from MCAS, I hope it's them. Um, but it, but we also know that our seventh graders did really well in that same span of time, right? That they were the ones that didn't have a test since, because of the way things fell. Um, they didn't have a real test between seven and ten, so um I I think it will be okay. Truthfully, the the one um to watch is this year's ninth graders, so when we're watching them and making adjustments.
Jen? I have a question, but not to be answered to- tonight, but more to be um when you do the literacy data presentation in December. And I would just be curious to what the trends are you're seeing with the middle school, with the writing specifically, that we're seeing somewhat with the MCAS scores? And I know the MCAS scores are just that one, one test, but I just would be interested to learn more about that when you come back in December.
So that's a tricky one, to be honest, as far as the, well, we have plenty of writing data from our writing program and the portfolios that the teachers keep. The place where we can't triangulate with I-ready is writing because there are, there's no writing even in my path. So that's all sort of like our own internal writing program.
Yeah, because I hear you saying how um beneficial the writing specialist is at the elementary school level. And then do we have something similar at the middle school?
We do, we just did as part of that big package that we got. So that's been great, and and she's been excellent at pushing in, like I said, across the disciplines and and helping with that. But yeah, that that's always been a trickier one to use to standardize test systems to, aside from MCAS, to to score. But I will say the elementary writing specialist is going through all the released um essays and meeting with the, you know, to get a more um building specific snapshot of of strengths and weaknesses too, rather than just the big um three, four, five mix.
All right, thank you. Great, thank you. Um, Carrie, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, similar to what I said about the mask too, it just, um, I I think it's really exciting. Um, all of the steps you're taking um and and moving forward and just if we can make make the expectation view that every child will meet and exceed over time, you know, as we, as we are able to implement all that, I think um it would be, that would be good. But I also just wanted to um kind of, two things can be true at the same time. Like, I really appreciate, to Michelle's point, um, you digging in and seeing where we need to, um, the areas of growth, potential growth and challenge, that's really great. But I also wanted to highlight how great everyone did with teaching, um, writing in particular during this time. Everything I've read about, um, you know, education during the pandemic was all disrupted, and writing was especially challenging. And I think it's just you and and the staff really deserve, um, kudos for for doing that, and um I I think that should be highlighted too.
Thank you, and I should have mentioned that too, absolutely for the staff. That was a Herculean task through the pandemic to to prioritize writing, and they all did.
And it chose.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, I'm Michelle Romano. I'm the interim science director, and I'm going to be presenting on the spring twenty twenty-two MCAS data. Um, a couple of things I want to go over is just kind of context of some of the testing. So um, our grade five MCAS is actually um content standards that are taught in grades three, four, and five. The same thing with our grade eight MCAS, it's um content standards that are taught in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our um high school biology is just content taught in the biology courses. Um, and then just kind of one thing you'll note and you'll see it on all the slides, um, the high school biology MCAS, this was the first year of the next generation MCAS, so we can't compare that data to any other data because it was the first year that we did that testing. Um, and then again, per the state, the MCAS scores, um, due to the pandemic, they're saying this year is the baseline. And I'm just going to be using kind of some state data just as context, um, as everybody else was. All right. Um, so this first set of data is grades three through eight. Um, the bar graph shows competency levels, uh, again, compared to the state with meeting, exceeding, partially meeting, and not meeting expectations. Uh, as you can see, most of our students um in this fifth grade MCAS, again, um, and the eighth grade MCAS specifically, uh, like we do not, there's no three, five, four, five, and six, et cetera. Um, most of our students were meeting, exceeding, or partially meeting expectations. Um, the line graphs are showing grade five MCAS and grade eight MCAS. Uh, you can see that across the board, there was a dip in twenty twenty-one. Again, that twenty twenty-one test was the partial test in both grade eight and grade five. Um, our grade five MCAS scores in twenty twenty-two have inclined. Our grade eight scores have slowly declined, uh, and I'll kind of explain um some next steps further along. Uh, the next set of data is our grade ten or our biology MCAS. Again, we can't compare to previous years, which is why we don't have the line graphs. And you can see that most of our students, specifically eighty percent of our students, um, were meeting or exceeding expectations. Um, less data than math and ELA, so I can go a little bit quicker. Um, so you can see that uh most of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations, um, and this is for all students across the board. So grade five, we have seventy-six, grade eight sixty-three, and the high school biology is that eighty percent. Um, and again, it far exceeds um the state, just for context. Um, our next grouping are students with disabilities. Um, across the board, most uh students with disabilities were exceeding, meeting, or partially meeting expectations. Uh, if we look at those uh three groups, we had ninety-one percent of our fifth graders um meeting, exceeding, or partially meeting expectations, seventy-eight percent of our eighth graders, uh, and eighty-nine percent of our uh high school biology students. Um, again, our outlier, and you've probably seen this across the board, especially looking at some of the data you were given earlier, um, that are outliers, that grade eight cohort, uh, where we had twenty-two percent of um our students with disabilities not meeting expectations. And again, I'll discuss some of those ways we plan to move all students toward proficiency a little bit later. Um, looking at high need students, again, the data table just shows um comparing to the state, most of our students uh with high needs uh were meeting, exceeding, or partially meeting expectations. Again, that grade eight cohort is that outlier um in in the grouping. Um, again, not as much data, so uh we only have one cohort that we can track with that pink color. Um, this ta- table illustrates all students, um, the students that were meeting um or exceeding expectations. Again, twenty twenty-one, we can't really compare data, um, because that was the test um for grade five and eight, where half the students were given one test, half the students were given the other. And again, the spring data um for the tenth grade biology was the first administration of the next generation um biology test, so we cannot compare that to any other years. Um, again, most of our students are meeting uh and exceeding expectations. Um, there was a little bit of a drop in grade eight, um, and grade five is going back to their pre-pandemic um level. We look at um all students uh with disabilities, um, you can see um there's some variability in the testing. And as a whole, we do have some work to do with that grade eight cohort, and again, tenth grade, uh, we can't compare, so we have no comparable data. Uh, high need students, um, again, this table shows meeting and exceeding expectations. Um, our grade five is actually getting uh closer to our pre-pandemic. Um, the eighth grade did perform lower, but it is comparable uh to the two thousand nineteen expectations um of that meeting or exceeding. And I'll review some of our next steps in the next couple of slides. All right, so overall, science conclusions, um, again, across the district and the state, uh, they stated that we had a modest recovery in twenty twenty-two. Um, Hingham Public School students continue to excel with a high percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and you can see the percentages. Um, across all levels, if we're looking at kind of content standards, all of our students excel at determining and explaining scientific concepts and interpreting data. Across all levels, um, students seem to struggle with creating and analyzing models in order to explain that scientific concepts and making arguments from evidence, so some things that we need to improve on. Um, so some elementary next steps, again, our overall goal is to get all students meeting or exceeding expectations. So some of these goals, and these are things that we're going to implement across elementary, not just in grade five, because again, remember, grade five um is content taught in three, four, and five. So we're going to increase um emphasis on creating analysis models in order to reinforce scientific concepts, uh, increase emphasis on open response writing, specifically looking at reading comprehension, and addressing uh multi-step questions, because most open response MCAS questions for science are multiple parts. Um, we're going to be looking at uh increasing emphasis on informational text, specifically how it's related to the current uh reading pilot in grades K through five, and we're also looking to reorganize our elementary scope and sequence to specifically align with this reading pilot. Uh, and finally, uh, in elementary, we're looking to incorporate and reinforce the keys to literacy strategies, specifically looking at teaching and reinforcing academic vocabulary. And secondary, so at the middle school level, we're currently piloting and implementing Open Said curriculum in grades six through eight. Um, Open Said is an open source curriculum that was developed um in conjunction with Massachusetts. It aligns with the NGSS standards and the Massachusetts framework. Um, and this new curriculum kind of uh helps to increase emphasis on data analysis practices uh by including opportunities to create and analyze data tables and graphs. So students actually conduct their own investigations, and they collect their own data, and they analyze that data in order to uh explain scientific concepts. Um, the other goal with this Open Said curriculum is to help students determine evidence to support a claim. So again, they're developing and taking in that data in order to support a scientific concept. Uh, the other next step in middle school is uh to work on writing strategies, specifically using keys to literacy in order to address the multi-step questions at our high school level. Uh, we're going to, uh, con- uh, continue to increase emphasis on determining evidence to support a claim, and again, focusing on that open response writing, reading comprehension, and those multi-step questions. Questions? Thank you, guys. So any questions for me or, I guess, anybody in general?
Uh, my evergreen science question, which Katie's had before, is uh looking at the students with disabilities and the numbers that are passed, which are very good. Uh, I'm just, there may be a cohort of kids who, I mean, science has sort of an advantage that you get to choose which test people take. And I think the physics test has been generally friendlier to kids with dyslexia and learning disabilities. Uh, so I just don't know if there may be room in the curriculum to have a cohort of kids who don't do the biology MCAS, but do the physics MCAS.
Could be. Um, I think uh we have a high percentage of students that do pass on the bio MCAS. I'm thinking this year we have three students that that did not pass, that we're um working to take the retake.
Awesome. This is a tool, er, you have in your quiver that the other departments don't have, so.
And the formerly known as science director hat, so um we do, there's usually no more than two or three students per year taking the retest.
Okay.
And we get them all through in that February retest. There was one student many years ago that we did um have do a technology and education, uh, the 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 technology um test, so one in twenty-five years?
So I should focus on solving problems that exist.
Yeah, so we've had kind of philosophical debates over over the years, Tim and I, that I do think that biology is a subject that every citizen needs to know, for your own family, for, you know, um, being a global citizen. Um, so it's just so essential for um kind of global citizenship, that I do think that bio um curriculum is core to what you'll experience in life. Not that physics is not important, but you are much less likely to use Newton's laws of motion in an authentic way in your daily life as you would being with a family member at a doctor's office.
Several years later, you might have won me over.
Yes, yes, yes. And we'll have the same same discussion next year, and I enjoy it every time.
Bio, the bio is seen statewide as a more accessible um MCAS.
A few districts that even use the.
Very few are, still give physics as their main science requirement. It just, biology is just seen as more accessible.
Carrie, do you have anything?
All science MCAS.
Thank you for the presentation.
Sorry, go ahead, Nate.
Like, some schools do physics first, some schools do biology first.
I also just needed to acknowledge, this is Michelle's first presentation, so well done, Michelle. And though this presentation was an hour long, it does represent hundreds of hours on behalf of these directors, so thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, great presentations. Thank you to everyone and to um all the educator staff and leadership who got everyone through these MCAS over the last few years. I know these have been incredibly challenging, so um, great work by everyone. All right, um, we will move on to hear a first quarter financial update. Um, Miss Ayesha, you're going to provide this for us?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Tough crowd, Ayesha, geez. Let's power through.
Good, then.
And then there was one.
Okay, so um what we did here in terms of um Q one is to just provide you with an update in terms of um our budget versus our expenditure to date and encumbrances to date, and to give you an idea of what 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 is available, and to compare that with nine thirty of twenty twenty-one, um, just to give you an idea of where we were last year, and um also to show you the whole year for twenty twenty-two in the previous, the previous year. Um, this analysis is really just to point out any areas that we really are keeping an eye on right now. Um, in terms of encumbrances right now, um, all our salaries have been encumbered. Um, in terms of fuel that has been encumbered as well, and and gas and heating that has been encumbered, and most of our utilities have been encumbered. But you'll see that there are large positive amounts, a handful of demands available. Um, and that's primarily because a lot of our supplies have not been encumbered since just Q one, and most of our services have not been encumbered or procured as yet. Um, I don't know if you have any questions in terms of this analysis or data?
I I think Ayesha also mentioned in the memo, there were a couple of areas that we'll keep an eye on. One was subs, um, those fuel costs, um, what else were we keeping an eye on? Professional development um as well, because they, uh, feeling that professional development wasn't as funded as as the need was. We entered into some contracts at the end of the year to support some of the work that you had heard today. Um, and they've um certainly impacted the professional development line, so we're keeping an eye on those three lines um moving forward. And our hope is to be able to give you a quarterly report like this throughout the year to give you information about where the budget stands. Sorry, Jen.
No, no, my, just a quick question about the fuel prices and if you'd be able to lock in those prices or if that will be worth it, or?
We just talked about that today.
Exactly. So it's funny because we have that discussion today. Um, in terms of um for the fuel prices for oil, um, we're seeing that the price, we didn't, we did not lock into any prices last year because of, they were so high.
Yeah.
And we're continuing, continuing to see the prices that are, we're getting for fuel. They're relatively very high right now as well. Um, in fact, what I will be getting, getting this week is I should be getting what the two, the two-year analysis is in terms of just kind of looking at what it is and what, and trying to make a decision as to whether we lock into that contracted amount. The fear is always that you lock into something and then prices drop, and then you're stuck in a contract where.
Under two-year contracts?
A two-year contract, yes.
Okay.
So um, so I'm looking, I want, I want to be getting that data this week, and I'll be looking at it. And um, I guess, I get, one other thing is that just having the contracts gives you the ability to plan. And you know exactly what the price is, and you know exactly what to budget and everything else. With the floating rate, there's a range of prices that she'll be providing as well, so that there's a high and a low range for the floating prices. But even then, um, it, we we have no ability to to forecast where, in which direction those prices will go, unless we lock into a price.
Yeah, I didn't realize they were two-year, as opposed, I was thinking they were one-year, but two-years is the big difference, especially now.
Exactly. But as it stands right now, though, the price that we budgeted, oil and diesel and vehicle fuel to be at, it's a lot, it's a little bit lower than the price that we're getting right now, just because we're floating right now. So that's one of the reasons why, this is one of the areas that we're continuing to focus on, just to make sure that our budget doesn't go way over, our actual zone go way over budget. Any other questions?
Carrie, how about you? Any questions?
Well, I'm glad I got to go now, and everybody's tired at this time.
No, this is really helpful, thank you. Yeah, it's good to see where we are lining up your date and be on top of things in case there's any surprises. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's really nice to see that, just how you lined it up like that.
Yeah, it's color-coded.
All right, thank you very much. All right, seven point seven is to receive an MCAS conference update. So several of the members went to all or some of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference down on the Cape, so thank you for those who went. And I think Carrie was going to give us an update, because she served as our delegate, and she's going to give us an update on how the delegate votes went, and then anyone else who was there who wants to give a brief update on what they learned there, that would be great.
Should we go to the podium, or just do it from our seats?
You can just do it from here. You can just do it from your seat. Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you. So for the resolutions, so for anyone listening, these shape the MASC legislative agenda, so they become the talking points and what the organization advocates the legislature for. So, if you recall, number two was increasing the special education reserve account, and that passed without any debate. The meeting was fascinating, by the way. It was like a school committee meeting, but with eighty-plus people, so it was very interesting. So number one was the one regarding transgender sanctuary laws for transgender students. That one had over an hour of discussion. Two people voiced objections to the resolution overall, because they didn't believe children should receive gender-affirming care at all. And then there was a discussion about whether this was in the purview of MASC and school committees in general, or if we should stick to schools. But at the end, the resolution did pass seventy-eight to seven, so it was overwhelming. Number three was the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education Membership, and that was to allow educators and school committee members to serve on that, and that was approved by a clear majority. Number four was preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. That also passed by a clear majority. Number five was personal financial literacy, and whether there should be a statewide curriculum requirement. There were some concerns about that being an unfunded mandate, but some school committee members spoke of some creative ways districts have taught financial literacy at no additional cost. There are a lot of internet resources, people partnered with local banks and local nonprofits, and that ended up passing by a clear majority. And then, finally, the regional reserve fund, which we got into action on, that passed universally, and it sounded like it's going to be a really good thing for the regional school districts, so that was a good thing. As far as the conference, it was great, really well-run as usual, and we learned a lot. I just started to paint really quickly, it was a broad brush, so, because it's late. The theme was an emphasis on recovery from the pandemic, especially social emotional health. There is acknowledgement that emotion is critical to what and how we all learn, and that it has to be addressed to successfully recover learning loss. It was noted that in many cases, the adults are struggling too, parents and staff, and that makes it really challenging, as those are the people that support students. So there are a lot of ideas about how to create a culture, a safe culture, mutual learning, and I can talk to anyone about those, but I won't get into them all now. And there's an emphasis as equity is part of that work too, and the importance of systemic equity, so it shouldn't just live in one, with one person or in one department, but should be kind of implemented across the district, and there's some really interesting ideas on how to do that. I also attended two panels on negotiations, and I'll just share about salary negotiations later.
Thank you. Anybody else who was there?
Sure, I attended some on special education law and the science of reading, which was really interesting, as we're moving in that direction in the district. I also dove into sort of, a lot of the conference was focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, but really focused on sort of giving the community a voice, building support, and really working with people who don't agree with you, and bringing people along with you, and not just trying to steamroll over community members who have some opposition to those things. So I think that was really useful going forward. I think one of the things I really appreciate is while school committee meetings sort of around us are turning into a three-ring circus, we've always been focused on the kids in Hangham, and I think that's a focus we want to continue to have with school committee, so.
Ally?
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what Carrie and Tim said. We, I think, all kind of came away with a little bit of the feeling of, wow, we have it really good with our school committee, so thank you to all of you for making an easy transition as a new member, and hearing from other school committees was fascinating to hear some of the things they're managing and dealing with, and some of the infighting among school committee members. I attended some of the same sessions. I also attended sessions on proactive communications, how to deal with navigating polarizing issues with communications, special educations, one, science of reading, some financial oversight. Again, all with the themes of equity, diversity, inclusion kind of woven throughout, which was interesting to hear, you know, from different schools and their districts, how they were doing that. But I think probably a lot of you have already received questions that have like pages and pages of notes, and if you haven't, I will get to you with my questions personally, from all the takeaways from the conference. It was great to attend.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, I attended some of the same ones that these guys have attended. The other one that I did, so I did the proactive communication and communities divided, because we saw a lot of that, and I think it was, it's important. We have an important year dealing with Foster and the possible override, so trying to figure out how we communicate that and tell our story, I think is going to be important. LGBTQ inclusive and administrative leadership, I attended. Also superintendent evaluation, and realized that Michelle, Carrie, and I are the only ones who have ever done an evaluation, so we were talking about possibly getting MASC to come in and do a workshop for the whole school committee, so that we could, we can learn through that process.
Probably a little rusty, too.
It's been a few years.
Been a couple of years.
I've been on it, it's my third year, and I haven't done it.
And you haven't, wow.
It's crazy.
Yeah, I only did one.
Really looking forward to that.
And then I did attend one, the school committee role in financial oversight. Ayesha got to hear from me right after that night. I was texting her through Siri, and some things that we'll have to consider as we move forward, so I'll bring that up in our subcommittee. So, that was it.
Thank you. All right, thanks again for everyone who went. All right, eight, eight, subcommittee and project reports. You know, I'll start with Carrie. Do you have anything? And if you don't, that's perfectly okay.
So I updated everyone on salary negotiations earlier. The middle school council met on Thursday, the twenty seventh. The makeup of the council is changing. They're adding one teacher, gender-wise, one in a contested election on the staff side, and one parent. Stop again, it was one in an un-contested election on the parent side, so that'll be good to expand that. We covered the county in, let's see, PTO is holding a parent training event with Juman and Dutra this week. It's about building relationships, and especially building relationships with your middle schoolers, so check that out. The council is starting to look at the handbook, so they started that work, and we went over the school improvement plan. I think the goals are great and very much lined up with the district strategic plan. So they're meeting again on November twenty eighth.
Great, thank you. Tim?
Well, there was only one event that happened in Hangham last week, and that was the glorious return of the Hef Spelling Bee, which was a fantastic event. And just forgive me as I go through, the third grade team that won were the smart buggies from PRS, and you're lucky we're out of time, or else I was going to challenge people with the words that they won on here, but they won with the word trapeze. The fourth grade winners were the triple threat team from East, and their winning word, the word that they won on was politician. And the fifth grade honeybees from Foster won, and their word was professor. So it was a wonderful event, really awesome. Human Rights Commission is going to meet Wednesday, November thirtieth, at seven o'clock. The Special Ed Subcommittee will meet Thursday, December first, at four fifteen. The Academic Programming, formerly known the Curriculum Committee, which will be the last time I say that, was going to meet on December eighth at four fifteen. And the office hours, we changed them, they're going to be, they were supposed to be next Monday, we realized nobody wants to go to office hours the week of Thanksgiving, nobody wants to go to office hours the week of Christmas, which is where they were scheduled. So we're combining the December and November office hours into a December fifth office hours with Nessa and Ally. It'll be seven thirty through nine o'clock at the high school, I think room one thirty-one, but that will be posted. And if anyone has ideas about how to get more community involvement in them, in full disclosure, we've not had any people show up to any of the office hours this year, so we're going to keep having them, but if people don't come, we realize that's probably not a need that's out there, so I'm not sure if we'll either make them more infrequent or?
Impossible to do a hybrid model there, because there's no signal in that room.
All right, Ally, do you have anything?
Yes, Climate Action Committee has an engagement session on December seventh at seven PM. It'll be via Zoom this time, and they'll be showing a draft of the climate action plan in its current state, which it's getting near completion, so they'll be showing it for feedback with the public. And also, in good Hangham news, they have hired a sustainability coordinator, Ginny Leclair, who was helping via Energius, the company that was working on the plan, has taken the position, it's a joint position with Cohasset, and I believe she started, or it was supposed to start today or sometime this week, they're finalizing details, so another win for Hangham. And then for Hangham Arts Alliance, they are continuing, they're hosting some small little events around town, just to spread the word about the Arts Alliance and engage with people. They'll be having their first larger fundraiser event on March eleventh at the Hangham Community Center, so mark your calendars, should be a great event. And they've also started their grant process, so they have the information on their website for that, if anyone's interested. And they gave out their first grant to a local artist on Whitney, and I believe they had that event, it was a Japanese firing technique that results in unique, beautiful pieces, due to the beautiful and less predictable nature of working with hot heat. So I had some pictures online, if anyone was interesting, interested in that.
East School Council meeting scheduled for tomorrow. That's all I have.
I attended the SNAP meeting on November eighth. They're finishing up their fall sports program, getting into their winter sports with extending their hockey and continuing their yoga and Simba programs, and basketball. And then for upcoming events, they are having, do their reads across America on three local cemeteries on December seventeenth. And then I also attended the South School Council meeting on October twenty-sixth, which we heard tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that there's some warrants in your packet.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yep.
All right. For me, just have two quick things. The Hangham High School Council next meeting is this Wednesday. And also, I think, Matt, you're joining me, at the Plymouth River School PTO meeting on Wednesday?
Right.
Okay, all right. The PTO meeting, PRS PTO meeting, and they invited me and Matt, because I think Ally couldn't make it to their meeting, just to give them a school committee update and just chat with folks. So, that was it. Very quickly, I sent you an email, the school council training, do you, was that something you expected us to attend, should we, should we not?
You're all welcome to, but for the fun, on November seventeenth, which I think is Thursday, at six o'clock, probably downstairs, we're having the annual school council training. It's something that's required to be done annually, is to just give school councils an update on their roles, a reminder. We'll probably also do quite a bit of discussion around the budget, and budget planning and their role in the budget, and a review also of requirements around open meeting law. You're all welcome to come, if you'd like, but be downstairs at six o'clock.
But not required, because we are liaisons, not actual members of it, so, okay.
Just, we had an offer from the state to, for free COVID tests, which we did take them up on, and we'll be sending home some, and it's for students and staff, two COVID tests that can be used, not required, but we'll be sending home, at the high school, they'll give them out to students in the cafeteria to take. We'll inform parents that they're coming home, and at the elementary and middle school, we'll do an opt-out form, so if you don't want them, please let us know, you can opt out. But we thought it was a way for families, if needed, to have easy access, and if they want to use them to keep their family and students safe in our school community, we would greatly appreciate it, but no, it's just an optional piece, we'll also have some for staff, so there'll be two of those going home via backpack.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, at ten twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hi.
Ally.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Hi.